I would like to reconvene the meeting and call the meeting to order for the City Council Meeting, October 3, 2017. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Moats.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. I want to announce that tonight's City Council Meeting was called to order at 5:00 this evening. Our first order of business was the public comment period. Following the public comment period of the agenda, the City Council then recessed to a closed session, meeting to discuss the appointment process for our new city manager, as well as to discuss negotiations. At the last City Council Meeting, we had some inquiries as to what our process is for replacing Mr. Hayden. In fact, today's Santa Maria Times had an editorial on that topic. Let me just state that, for the record, that the City Council has had three closed-session meetings to discuss the options for replacing our city manager. We have deliberated on these options and have had these discussions in compliance with the Brown Act. And tonight's closed session has been continued till the end of this evening's City Council Meeting, so council can continue with our deliberations. This will be our fourth closed-session meeting. So, having said that, we'll move on to our first order of business this evening, and it's a proclamation. Councilmember Moats will be making the presentation.
This proclamation is for Spelling Bee Day. Whereas the city of Santa Maria recognizes the importance and value of literacy for all its residents, and whereas thousands of adults in the Santa Maria Valley are functionally illiterate in English, meaning they are unable to read traffic signs, medication labels, and assist their children in school, and whereas a literate workforce helps to improve economic vitality and the quality of life for all, and whereas the mission of the nonprofit Central Coast Literacy Council, CCLC, is to empower lives through English literacy, and whereas the city partners with the CCLC by providing office and study space at the Santa Maria Public Library, and whereas the CCLC will host its literacy outreach effort by way of its 24th Annual Adult Spelling Bee on Saturday, October 7, 2017, at the Santa Maria Alks Lodge. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims August, October 7, 2017, as Spelling Bee Day in the city of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to increase community literacy by becoming members and/or sponsors of the Central Coast Literacy Council, participating in the upcoming Spelling Bee, becoming a tutor, or becoming a literacy learner. And accepting this will be Laura Artiaga, who is Director of the Central Coast Literacy Council.[207.15][207.15](APPLAUSE).
We are excited to receive the proclamation. I want to thank the city and the citizens in this community for supporting our efforts. We are proud to say that this past year, we served almost over 300 students, and we have over 100 tutors in our program. I'd like to thank our board members as well. We have Terry Zuniga and Robert Reiser here today, supporting us. Again, we could not do this without our tutors, most of all. They are our driving force and our donors in this community. Again, also to City Council, always supporting us and the city staff. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.[263.14][263.14](APPLAUSE). If any of you have not been to the Spelling Bee, it's a great entertainment time to go and watch, because you're not being put on the spot. You don't have to spell the words. There are people out there in the community that will, and it's great, and it's great entertainment. Thank you, Laura, so much. On the next item of our agenda this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the community media organizations provide information that is not covered by mainstream commercial media, and whereas the city of Santa Maria operates a public-access television media center with programming available on Comcast Channel 23, 24, and 25, and whereas Santa Maria Community Television provides a means for people to create and tell their diverse stories about the community, and whereas the public-access television station also connects community organizations, schools, local government, to their constituents, and whereas, in many communities, people are not aware of the diverse and valuable programming on public education and government-access television channels, and whereas communities across the nation are celebrating Community Media Day. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes October 20, 2017, as Community Media Day in Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to utilize Santa Maria Community Television to help build our community by encouraging conversations about common interests, increasing discourse around policy issues, fostering understanding of local cultures, and sharing information to improve our lives. The mayor has put her name to this and affixed it on this third day of October, 2017. And here to accept this is Kathy Staples and Jeanie Sparks.[392.12][392.12](APPLAUSE).
Madam Mayor. Oops. And City Council.
Look, we'll destroy your microphone.
Don't miss this. Don't miss the microphone. On behalf of Alan Sutterfield, the general manager for the studio, and Dale Penya, the media specialist, and all the producers, many of which are here tonight, and I'm going to get a chance to introduce you to, we'd, and Jeanie and myself, as well as Mark Van de Cap, we'd like to say thank you. Thank you for acknowledging community television. There are three stations, as have been acknowledged by the proclamation, and on those stations, particularly Channel 23, the City Council Meetings have the wonderful opportunity of being transparent for the entire community. I watch them all the time, so this is where you find out what's happening, and we're grateful for your constant support of being a part of that. You also have your Planning Commission meetings that are on the television for review by the public, and Recreation and Parks Commission as well. We're grateful that you, as a city, are concerned to get your knowledge of what you're working on out into the general public, so thank you. In addition to that, I want to have Jeanie and I do a couple little back-and-forth for you, and then I will introduce the producers. Jeanie?
It's the Dog and Pony Show.
Yes.
I'm Jeanie Sparks, and Kathy and I are both on your Board of Directors of Santa Maria Community Television, and that's why Alan asked us to speak today. We're so excited to be here and to have this great resource that not every community has, and it's available to people in Orket two. This is one of our beefs, is that the County of Santa Barbara doesn't do this, but we're trying to get them to up their game and to provide more support. But Kathy mentioned Channel 23. Well, we also have Channels 24 and 25. Channel 24 is the education channel, and on there you'll find that Alan Hancock College and the University of California Television and Santa Barbara County Education Department all post-programming on that channel.
Thank you, Jeanie. And if you haven't seen any of those programs, they're wonderful, and that's public education coming right over your Comcast station. Thanks, Jeanie. So, I'd like to take a moment to introduce some of...
Channel 25.
Yeah. Some of our producers on Channel 25, which is the media resource for residents and nonprofits. So if I speak your name, would you be so kind to stand up, so our City Council can see our good folks? Isaac Barroom is the voice of the Hispanic community. Reggie Walsh, Dead End Drive-In. Stephen Paske, St. Mary's Fiesta, 2017. Manny Mistis, All About Guitar, and you could learn to play the guitar with Manny. LaRonda Lewis, Jolly Knows Its Entertainment Showcase. LaRonda, do we have fun with your program, or what?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Leslie Thwartson, The Leslie Show. Lots of topics there. Jim Maziness, Valley Speaks. Jim, are you with us today?
Absent.
Absent? I'm sorry, Jim. We would have appreciated honoring you. Sarah McDonald and Connie Ford, the Democratic Club of Santa Maria Valley. And I want to make sure that David Campbell was recognized also for Leslie Thwartson's program, The Leslie Show. Folks, you do a good job.[604.66][604.66](APPLAUSE).
Okay. So the last thing we want to tell you about is the Friends of Santa Maria Community TV. It's a new group that was formed. It's an ad hoc committee. It's with these local producers and other producers, and people who are interested in keeping the station going. And we're doing some fundraising. We're sponsoring a crowdfunding initiative during the month of November, and we have a goal of raising $8,800. These funds will be used to webstream our programs, because now you can get them on Comcast, but if you don't have Comcast, then you can't get our programs, unless they're on social media, which some people do. But we're going to put them on social... We'll webstream them, and we'll also make them available as video on demand, so this will greatly expand the audience. Donations will be acknowledged on Channel 25, so if anybody would like to donate, we would very much appreciate it.
That's right. We'll get your name in lights, okay? This is an invitation, on Comcast Television, for others who are interested and caring about this community, to come do programs with us. Alan Sutterfield is constantly available to meet you, help you, direction you, teach you, and we'd love to have more public involvement, so that we can be the heart of this city. Thank you again so very much.
And we really appreciate the city's support, because this station wouldn't happen without the city, and of course, all the producers and everyone else, so thank you all.
Very grateful. Thanks.[694.82][694.82](APPLAUSE).
I too would like to thank all the producers, and thank you, Jeanie and Kathy, for bringing that forward, because this puts faces now in the people for us, so thank you so much. So, the next item on our agenda this evening is another proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this presentation is for the 75th anniversary of the FBI Agency. Whereas in May 1942, during World War II, Federal Bureau of Investigations, FBI, Director J. Edgar Hoover dispatched Special Agent James Casey to Santa Maria, California, creating the FBI Santa Maria Resident Agency, and whereas the Santa Maria Resident Agency expanded over the years in both size and investigative focus, and whereas the Santa Maria Resident Agency is one of 380 resident agencies across the United States and Puerto Rico, and whereas the Santa Maria Resident Agency is comprised of nearly 25 special agents and professional staff conducting federal investigations of criminal, counterterrorism, counterintelligence nature, and whereas this special observance provides all Santa Marians with the opportunity to appreciate the honorable men and women of the Santa Maria Resident Agency who have dedicated their lives to protect the American people and uphold the Constitution of the United States. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims, recognize the 75th anniversary of the Federal Bureau of Agency Investigations, Santa Maria Resident Agency, in the city of Santa Maria, and thanks them for providing federal law-enforcement support to local law enforcement agencies, residents, and businesses on the Central Coast. And here to accept this is Brian Sullivan, FBI agent, and I just want to say thank you so much for being present, Brian.[823.38][823.38](APPLAUSE).
Members of Santa Maria and the community, as was stated in 1942, Director Hoover dispatched the first FBI agent to the Central Coast in response to Japanese submarine sightings off of the coast. Over the years, our world has changed, our mission has changed, but one thing that hasn't changed is that our dedication to the men and women of Santa Maria, and our joint law-enforcement partners, and our continued to the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you very much for your time tonight.[898.63][898.63](APPLAUSE).
And for our final presentation of the evening, Councilmember Boyson will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an honor to provide the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. And whereas a tragic loss of life occurred in the Great Chicago Fire of October 1871, when 250 people lost their lives, over 100,000 were left homeless, and 17,400 buildings were destroyed, and whereas the city of Santa Maria is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting the city of Santa Maria, whereas fire departments throughout the United States responded to 365,000 home fires in 2015 alone, resulting in 2,560 deaths, whereas many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, whereas having a home fire escape plan that includes two exits from every room, a path to the outside, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside is essential for emergency preparedness, and whereas home fire escape plans should be developed and practiced by all members of the household to ensure that everyone knows what to do in a real fire situation, whereas the Santa Maria Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education, whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims October 8 through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to develop a home fire escape plan with members of their household and practice it twice a year. And appropriately enough, accepting this award is our own Fire Chief, Leonard Champion.[1040.58][1040.58](APPLAUSE).
Just to let you know, the fire department here in Santa Maria has an outreach program that targets every third-grade student to talk about fire prevention and fire awareness. We talk about what the fire department does for their community, and in that, we also talk about how, in a fire, seconds count. For every second that passes, if you don't know what to do, the likelihood of you making out safely decreases. So we're very happy to have that program. We're reaching out to those students in our community, giving them those tools on how to be safe. I'd also like to mention that on October 14, Saturday, October 14, we are having an open house at Fire Station 1, and invite the community to come out, and we're going to have demonstrations showing the public what it looks like when we do auto-extrication. We're going to have equipment and station tours, and then we're also going to have our fire prevention trailer there, and that's a miniature trailer. For those of you that haven't seen this before, it has a mini living room, kitchen, and bedroom. The students go in there, we talk about fire safety, we fill up the bedroom with fake smoke, and then we talk to the students about what to do in a fire, and we talk about the two ways out of their bedroom. And so, we welcome the public. Hopefully, there's a good turnout, and of course, city staff and council are welcome to come out as well. And if you want to go through the trailer, you may have to crawl or kneel down to go through. It's kind of tight, but it's a lot of fun, and we're looking forward to it. So thank you for the proclamation. I appreciate it.
What time is it on October 14?
So again, Saturday, October 14, and that's from 9 to noon.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief.[1174.13][1174.13](APPLAUSE).
Next item on the agenda this evening is the Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members.
Okay. Thank you. Before we move on, does anyone have items they wish to pull? None? Wow, okay. I know.
Madam Mayor, I'd move for the approval of the Consent Calendar.
Second. So I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Calendar. Any other questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Hi.
And Councilmember Cordero.
Excuse me, Mayor. I put a request to speak on the consent...
Mr. Armento, we're in the middle of a...
I know, but I put a request for the consent item. I mean, I apologize.
Okay, one minute. Okay, we have it down for item number six.
I didn't put no six. I just put consent item and public comment, two of them. But it's all right. It's... We'll handle it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
The next item is a regular business item, and it seems like we have a lot of people here tonight for the item number... Item number four, and no one to speak on item number five, so would the council like to flip this over? And so do number five first?
Item number five will probably go fairly quickly.
Very quickly. Okay. Okay, so we will do item number five. Madam Clerk, can you read item number five?
The City Council will consider approving the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 Community Development Block Grant funding priorities.
And the staff report is to be made by Community Programs Manager, Ms. Nottis.
Madam Mayor, I can make that report if you would be so inclined, or...
She's here.
You're here? Okay.
I'm sorry, Rosie, to spring this on you, it just... Okay. It's... We had no one to speak on the CDBG, and then we have all the people to speak on the other item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll go ahead and just recap the council agenda report. Basically, we are asking that the city adopt our 1819 proposed priorities for our CDBG funding. Now, we are looking at next year's funding, and so this is a process we do every year. We go through the Block Grants Advisory Committee, ask the committee to prioritize based on a number of factors. We do a community needs workshop that we publicize, and it is very well-attended, and we also take into consideration throughout the year the input we have from not only the city, the City Council, and also the community members. And so, in the last few years, our priorities have stayed pretty consistent, and this year, the only change is to remove item number four, which is economic development, and condense our priorities to basically three instead of five. We would still keep the fifth one, which is revitalize existing neighborhoods, but we would add it to number three, so we would bump it up with affordable housing, because we find that the way that we end up allocating the funding usually ends up right in line with being a top priority. Last year, we gave over half of our funding and capital funds to revitalizing neighborhoods. So, we just felt it was more in line with how we are distributing our money, and also, we have learned in the last few months through HUD and HUD's technical assistance, that funding economic development through CDBG can be very tricky, and it does put the city in a precarious situation at times if we're not careful about how that money is used. It's just one of those items that is very... There's a lot of gray, and so, we felt that even... Our allocations are usually mostly going towards number one and two priorities, as well as three, which is affordable housing, and five, which is revitalizing existing neighborhoods. So, this is why the committee felt that it was beneficial for us to adjust our priorities. Again, the only thing that's really being eliminated is economic development, however, that doesn't mean that economic development can't be considered. It doesn't mean that anybody wanting to apply under economic development can't apply. It just means that they're not on the priority of... For 1819. That doesn't mean it can't... We can't revisit it for the following fiscal year, though.
And I know we've had problems with that in the past, and I guess maybe HUD needs to be a little clearer, because we seem to know what we were doing on that, and we agreed with that, but HUD was not very clear with their criteria, so anyway. Any questions of Ms. Nottis? None?
The only question... More of a comment than a question, but I was very happy to see that we have rejoined the county home consortium for 1819. And can you tell us how much that... We anticipate that approximately, how much that will mean to the city?
We are still in the process of finally finalizing that with the county, and we are working with our HUD rep, who ends up being the HUD rep for the county as well, so that's always a good thing. It's easier to deal with this one person. But we... On average, we get about $300,000, which we haven't been receiving these last two years. So right now, we are still working with home funds that we received a couple of years ago, that the county was... Is allowing us to extend and use through next June, and then by then, the 1819 funding will kick in. So hopefully, the city won't feel the impact of not having been a part of the consortium for a couple of years.
Well, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have no requests to speak, right?
We have no requests to speak. We do have one written communication...
One written communication?
From Women's Economic Ventures requesting that they continue to be considered for capital funding.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council for any discussion. Any discussion or questions? Do I hear a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-115 to be adopted. The proposal changes to the Community Development Block Grant priorities for fiscal 2018 to 19.
Second. Second time.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-115, and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats. And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go back to item number four. That was quick. Faster than I had anticipated. So, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number four?
The City Council will consider recommendations to establish a Santa Maria Public Art Master Plan and City Art Fund fee.
Staff report is to be made by our Recreation and Parks Management Analyst, Mr. Smitherman.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to bring this item to you tonight. Dennis and I will be kind of tag-teaming this presentation for you. First off, before we get started, I'd like to thank and commend the community members and the commissions that saw this item before coming to you, and also, Mr. Smitherman, for his work on this project. What we're going to present to you tonight are a couple of ideas regarding public art in the city of Santa Maria. Mr. Smitherman prepared a PowerPoint that we shared with the Planning Commission a few months back, and we've made a few modifications to the original show, trying to incorporate some of the items in our staff report. So if you'll bear with us, I'm going to go ahead and have Dennis take over, present the Arts Master Plan, and I may be popping in every once in a while along his PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm excited to share with you the public art master plan is presented. We... The community has created this plan starting back as early as December 2015, and has worked with education businesses, foundations, and many others to create this plan. The Recreation and Parks Commission has reviewed this plan on at least four occasions, and has also gone to Planning Commission as well. The plan consists of eight goals. We tried to give you a synopsis of each goal, and then what that could look like, or what it currently looks like here in the city. We'd like to use public art to support our identity as a city, intertwining culture... We'd like to use public art to support our identity as a city, intertwining culture, people, neighborhoods, and ideas. You'll see on the left, one of our newer utility art box creations, and on the right, a sculpture out of San Luis Obispo in their skate park, which really sums up the typical user of the park. Goal number two would be to embrace public art citywide, not only in development, in private development, but also in parks, as well as commercial development. Notice the sculpture on the left is in front of our retail market, and the center is a park, and on the right is a private development. Goal number three would be to celebrate our unique style here in our entryways, in our communities, and our neighborhoods, with examples of permanent banner display representing each neighborhood. The top right you'll see is a sculptured manhole cover, quite common in European and Asian countries. And on the bottom right is a flag representing a specific community in Italy. All things that we could do here in Santa Maria to recognize our community and our entryways. Goal number four would be to make downtown a more walkable city. One of the ideas would be to reconceptualize the pedestrian bridge over Broadway between Town Center West and Town Center East, to create a more fun environment using trompe l'oeil art in just an everyday setting, and create creative crosswalks to really promote walking in our downtown area. Goal five, we've been working really hard on as a city, to incorporate more public art in our park, and I think you'll see that with the new One of Vista Park that will be coming online in the near future with creative tile work and with some sculptures. But we have 27 beautiful parks that could use art in each and every one of them. Goal number seven would be to support temporary artwork, including expanding the utility art box project, bringing in specific exhibitions that are interactive to invite people to our downtown area and other areas of our city, and to allocate more funding for public art commissions, and working with different groups and activities to bring more art to our city in general. As you can see, we have a lot of art generating revenue through our local streams, through PCPA, the harmonic, the Philharmonic, the community choir, civic theater, and many According to a recent study from the Santa Barbara County, it was released by Santa Barbara County 2017 Arts and Economic Prosperity, this is what the average user spends when they attend an event, and this doesn't include ticket price. So you'll see meals and snacks, lodging, transportation, souvenirs, and gifts, and all of that equates to about $11.7 million a year. And from BGG, which is a leading environmental and real estate firm, that's whole goal is to set up business for property. They are not a real estate agent, they just help real estate agents. A lot of what they're saying is, is that percent for art ordinance is common and normal in more than 400 cities in the United States. Its ongoing visibility is great for the community. It provides a marketing bonanza to chambers of commerces and tourism boards, and there are many other financial benefits, as well as increasing the culture and relevance of those city that's affected.
Thank you, Dennis. So some of the things that we talked about is why public art in Santa Maria. And I'm not going to go through all the bullets here, but probably the most important part is to create a sense of community, a sense of pride in our community, and to create in an environment where we are encouraging individuals in the community to visit their parks or visit downtown. One of the things that we have been working on, as Dennis mentioned earlier, is this plan's been in the mix for about two years. The idea was brought up to the arts communities, through the arts communities, through the Rec and Parks Commission, who held several meetings about it. We finalized some recommendations from that commission. We worked with community development staff on trying to come up with a plan that we could present to the Planning Commission, and that was done. I believe there was a couple of study sessions, and then presented to the commission for their review. At that meeting, as we'll talk about in the recommendations, the Planning Commission had some of their ideas, some ideas also of how the plan might be implemented. So where this fits into the plan and the why now is that the city's effort to revitalize the downtown makes this a perfect opportunity to bring an item like this forward. It would provide a little bit of guidance for downtown. The community development staff has worked very diligently on trying to get the study underway. We would certainly like to have some public art plan in place that they could use as kind of a guide. There's also been some recent efforts, and this really speaks to the collection of a percent for the art fee. There are recent efforts at the state to have communities like Santa Maria allow secondary housing on what typically would have been a single residence lot. Those would be remodels or additions that, again, could capture some revenue for this kind of a program. Having an art plan in place right now prepares us for the future. It may be something that we grow into as time goes on, but it's one of the important steps that we've kind of missed along the way. For just a little historic perspective, there was a time when the city did work with the Chamber of Commerce and the Santa Barbara Foundation, and they created a program called the Audience Development Fund. And I believe it was roughly about $10,000 that the city and the chamber partnered with the Santa Barbara Foundation, who, again, matched those dollars. And those dollars were then made available through the Santa Barbara Foundation granting program to Santa Maria-based arts groups to develop their audiences. PCPA was a recipient, Santa Maria Civic Theater, and some other types of groups like that received funding. So tonight, you have some options to look at. One of them is considering the recommendations of the two commissions to adopt an arts master plan. The plan was in your packet as Attachment A, and to direct staff to prepare a fee ordinance based on input from the council tonight. You also have a consideration of a recommendation from staff to develop an ordinance calling for the establishment of an art fee at a quarter percent on all building permits issued by the city. And there is a litany of items here in the recommendation that talk about the values of the permits, the types of projects that could be, have fee imposed upon them. And then the third recommendation is that the council appoint a committee of sorts consisting of one council member, two planning commissioners, two Rec and Parks commissioners, and to be staffed by myself and the department, to further analyze the proposed arts plan and the art fee ordinance. In discussions today with the city manager's office, an alternative was presented also, and that is that perhaps the council would like to consider tonight adopting your Attachment A, which is the public art plan, and then going ahead and appointing the five-person committee to further analyze and refine the percent for the art program, and then bring that back to you at a later date. From our perspective, we have done a staff, we've done a very thorough job in vetting this out into the community. And again, I'd like to thank the people who were in favor of the program, and also those who have some concerns with it. It's important, and the process brought this out, to hear both sides of the story. Throughout the process, Mr. Smitherman has tried to provide responses to each of those concerns that were expressed. Probably one of the bigger concerns that came out of the discussion was whether or not this was, in fact, a tax. And in your staff report, the city attorney's office, Mr. Senko, has provided his legal opinion on that, and it's provided in there for your consideration. I'm available to answer any questions you might have, and-
Any questions of Mr. Pisata? Ms. Boyson?
Mr. Pisata, I, just a couple of questions. One, what are other agencies doing? I mean, Lompoc, Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo?
Thank you.
Mr. Boyson, if I can answer that question for you. I do have a list available of the local agencies, as well as statewide, that show how many organizations in our area are providing a similar service. And what we tried to do is break it down by population, median household income, and other factors. And right now, we have Pismo Beach, Salinas just got on board with a percent for our program, and other cities outside of our area a little bit, Burbank, Carson, Downey, all have some type of percent for art program. Now, each one may vary a little bit. For example, Pismo Beach does have a public percent for art program and a private percent for art program. So a percentage for municipal projects and a percentage for private development. Salinas just passed Thursday in June, and they have a public percent. So any municipal projects would then pay 1% towards a community art project. So it does vary. Within the 400 cities, we researched 70 really close, there's no two that are exactly alike. But there are many, many in our area that have a percent for our program.
And what are those percentages? I know the county of Santa Barbara has like 1% on public projects only, or?
Correct. Santa Barbara has a 1%, Pismo Beach has a 1% for both public and private development. Salinas has a 1% for public. And again, I'll be happy to provide you the full detailed list of all the cities that we have documented as well.
Okay. And the other question, as far as, I'm sure you looked at other funding sources. I mean, did we look at the idea of maybe some sort of transfer fee on trust deeds and things like that? Or are any other cities doing anything, any other type of funding besides this?
Yes, some have chosen to work with nonprofit organizations to, where they often hold a city contract, so then it comes from general fund dollars to support the nonprofit. Other cities tap into trans occupancy tax. There's many different ways to do this. The most common is a percent for our program.
Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield?
Mr. Smitherman, are these fees, are they voluntarily, do they come forward on the private sector, or is it mandated through the city?
Both. In this situation here that we're, that's being requested, it's a mandate.
Okay, so Pismo's mandating it, and San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, Lompoc, all of them are mandated? Okay, and those are 1%?
All three of those are 1%.
Dr. Motes?
I'd like to ask a question relative to a community, I think, similar to Santa Maria would be Salinas. So you say Salinas has a 1% public requirement, but no private requirement. Why is that? Why is it just public? Did they ask about private, and the community didn't want to fund that?
The research didn't go into extensive details of why they only asked for public, but that was the request at the time, looking at their agenda reports and the other documents that were provided and available. They felt it would be best at that time just to go after the municipal projects. There is a group that is looking forward to moving forward in the next year or so, asking for additional funding through private development as well.
And I also wanted to know, how about getting grants, like the Santa Barbara Foundation or something like that, as a supplement to requiring development?
Santa Barbara Foundation has really changed their focus over the last, you know, 10 years, and has really moved away from the arts, but there are larger organizations. But a lot of the organizations that we would look at for even $100,000 sculpture are publicly funded through federal government, the National Endowment for the Arts, for example, which is on the charter block as well. So we've seen art funding dry up across the nation. Our local foundations are more apt to provide a matching grant if the city would be able to provide the other match.
Councilmembers, I'm sorry. One of the things to consider is that we would be looking at having the art fund available to use that money and leverage it for other grants and funding sources. So that's one of the key elements of this.
Alex, in Orchid, they have the Orchid Children's Art Program. They have a big fundraiser for it every year, an auction, and I think they make a lot of money. Did anybody consider that as an option for fundraising as well?
Yes, and I think one of the things to consider is that there are a number of arts groups here who are nonprofit organizations, who do go out, run their events, solicit the community for donations to support the arts. So that angle is being covered by the nonprofit organizations. And I think right now, what we're seeing is the opportunity and the need for additional funding for art that is very specifically public art, that we're putting in our public parks or our public places, or if a developer wishes can put it into their particular development, that's, you know, like a shopping center or something like that, that's directed to attract the public.
And Alex, I have one technical question on item two. They talk about commercial building permits valued at more than $400,000, but they don't mention residential or manufacturing zone projects more than $400,000. Why is that?
I'm not sure where that one came from. I think it was designed to be, comments from planning commissioners, we tried to build into that, that, take their input from that. I think the main point was what are the typical areas that the public will be visiting? And typically, they're not going to be visiting a manufacturing area. They're going to, they are going to be visiting a shopping center, or apartment complexes, or something along those lines.
Mr. Cordero?
Yes. Dennis, is there anything in your research that tends to show what people would identify as success with this? Whatever that, whatever success is with regard to the arts. Since I learned about this a couple of months ago, that this was coming forward, I've just paid particular attention to what I kind of call street art, or public art, whatever. And it seems like every community that I've had an opportunity to visit, and there have been several, they all have something. They all have something that represents their community. I was recently in Washington, and they had birds cut out of metal that were, you could clearly tell it was a bird, but if you looked at it from another angle, it could have been a whale or something. But it was, it was very interesting how these people came forward with this. I'm not so sure I would have noticed it as much if I had not known that the city was going to be coming forward with this. Is there anything at all that you have that says this community did this, and it was a great success because?
You know, it's hard to pinpoint exact dollar amounts, but I do believe that the literature that's available will show the return on investment for public art is $1 to $5. So for every $1 spent, $5 returned, and that's made available through the National Endowment for the Arts, as well as American for the Arts Foundation, and that's the number that's being used in their most recent study, which just came out in August of 2017.
Okay, so there's some monetary feedback from the-
Absolutely, as well as intrinsic. You know, we tend to visit places that are beautiful and have art, and it's very common, dollar-wise, yes, but also feeling-wise as well.
And another thing, and the city of Sedona has, and there are some councilpeople more familiar with Sedona than others, but we were there a few years ago, my wife and I, and they had this public art, and they turned it into some sort of like a game. Well, and then if you identified these, this public art, and you could tell where they were, you went back to your hotel or resort, wherever you were, and you got some little prize. And I was, I almost hate to admit this, but I got all tied up in this thing, and I get like a little, my wife is driving me around, and I'm writing this stuff down, and I said, "I'm going to win, I'm going to win." And I ended up winning something pretty knock, just like a little box of crayons or something like that. I was expecting a new car, you know?
But Mike, that's Sedona.
But I just wonder if something like that might be viewed in the future to entice people to find these things in our community and turn it into something like that?
Absolutely.
To generate more interest in them going out and physically looking for certain pieces of art. I, I'm not sure that would apply to us. And I also like the idea that if we're going to have something like this, that I envision somewhere in the city, we're going to have this giant strawberry or something, because the community, the art should reflect our own demographic- own demographics and our economic engine and our things that apply to just this community. So, I kind of like to see something like this go forward.
Do you have another question?
I do, I do, and this one is for Mr. Posada. You had mentioned that there are several mechanisms for people to donate nonprofit, and you mentioned, you know, there's the need and the opportunity, but is there the interest? Are these nonprofits gaining enough money to fund the art as opposed to putting it on private developers?
I think everybody in the arts community would tell you that, that there's always a need to raise more money for the arts, that no, no single nonprofit, like any other, even if you're not an arts nonprofit, we all know, we all, all of you have worked for nonprofits and been on boards, you know there's never enough money raised in the community, that you're either depending on CDVG or some other grant, some other foundation that's being put forward. So, to answer your question, I think that the arts community do the best they can to raise the money, that their particular organization needs to meet their budgets. Beyond that, and beyond funding for public arts, the last public art projects that I remember in Santa Maria were the two bronzes, the courthouse, the one out front here, and then the county government center, were the real true public art funded by the public, the county arts fund. The other art that you see, like the example that's on the, on the screen, there's projects that we've kind of undertaken at Wreckin' Parks through some of our renovation projects. It's Pearlman Park downtown, where we commissioned an artist to come in and kind of tell the story of the community that we have in Santa Maria. Across the street in front of Long Bowling Green, again, a public art project that we were originally going to use at the mall before the movie theaters went in, was a depiction of our agricultural past that's across the way, that the art boxes that Mr. Smitherman mentioned, and a few of the other projects. We've also been able to take advantage of, I believe in major A funds, I'm not sure, Public Works Director might be able to help me on this, on the overpasses, where we've seen inlays of ceramic tile artwork that were done by local artists and then put into our projects. So, art has been evolving, it's just a little slower. And to, I guess to answer your question, Ms. Waterfield, about putting it on the developers, we're actually looking at them to partner with us in this. The options for them is if they do not wish to participate in the fee program, they can certainly present a art project that they want to put into their, to their specific projects. And if you look around, especially at the Bradley Square, they did put in a couple of nice fountains, you know, that's, could be considered art, it's under some definition, maybe it would be a little bit more detailed than that, but there are options for them. It's not a strictly give us the money kind of an approach that we're using.
My other, my other question is, how many nonprofit art associations, organizations are there here? If you don't know that, have you guys ever talked about them coming together as one to build one great organization to?
Yeah, we're lucky to have that in Santa Maria. The Santa Maria Arts Council has been around for 30-plus years and is an umbrella organization for many, many of the arts organizations here in Santa Maria, representing almost every fathom of medium possible here in our local area. So, there is an umbrella organization currently in place, and you'll see in the plan that they would be part of the jurying committee to help select public art.
And since you brought up Pearlman Park, maybe you can explain this to me. What the heck is that structure out there? Because that does not depict Santa Maria at all.
That is a piece of creative playground equipment that if you go out there at certain times of day, the kids from the development there at Pearlman Park do go out and play on that, it's pretty busy.
It looks so unsafe.
It's on a resilient surface underneath it, but it's a climbing adventure kind of a piece that's out there, a little bit different, a little bit on the modern side of things. And we thought that would bring, again, a different dimension to that intersection.
Interesting. And those mosaics, as if I recall, on the overpass were done by Allen Hancock volunteers. Those were?
Yes, students at Hancock College.
Yes, absolutely. And that was built into the budget for the overpass, so more volunteerism maybe is the answer.
Mr. Cordero?
Yes, first, Ms. Waterfield, I suggest you be careful if you start crawling on that thing over there. You know, the one you didn't mention, Alex, is, and I always thought this was really kind of cool, is the mural that's up at Atkinson Park. They painted that about eight, nine years ago, or something like that. And I got an opportunity to meet some of the painters that were there, and they took a very unique approach to this, and they went out on the other side of the building and basically took a picture of that, and then painted that mural on the opposite side of the building. So, you're kind of almost like looking through the building, and I'll not forget, and if anybody in the public gets an opportunity to go over and see this thing, it's really kind of neat. There was a dog that hung around there while they were doing the painting, and it took them weeks or months to get this thing done. So, they just painted the dog into the mural. So, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of beauty and information that can be conveyed through the artist's rendition of what he or she sees, and they want to replicate in our community. And I think, once again, that to, to start doing something like that could, could really step up the, the, how our city is viewed, what it looks like to people that come in and have never been here before and want to come back because of the artwork that they see in our community, so.
Councilmember Cordero, thank you for reminding me about that piece of artwork, because I think we even overlook that in our inventory. That project was actually kind of jointly funded with the city and Hancock College when the lifelong learning facilities were added on to the Atkinson Center.
I remember Hancock were some of the students there.
Yes, and they provided students, and it was a community effort. Again, local artist was hired to do the work and come up with a concept. There's also a concept from a satellite view of Santa Maria, and it narrows all the way down to Atkinson Park, and it's a very unique approach that he used there. Again, partnerships, yes.
Any other questions of Mr. Posada or Mr. Smitherman?
Madam Mayor, I may. Couple of questions. On page four of the staff report, we talk about the total valuation of residential and commercial permits. Do we, first of all, have a breakdown of how much of that was commercial versus residential? And how, and the valuation of those permits? How many of those, of that amount, how many of those were small permits versus, you know, permits in excess of $50,000, that sort of thing? And the last question would be, what was the value of our public projects in 2016? Was that within that $109 million?
No, I don't believe so. I think what you're seeing there was just numbers provided by the planning department as to what, or building department as to what permits were issued in that year and their valuation. There was no breakout of what those were.
Do we have any idea of what the approximate percentage of residential, Mr. Cordero? I'm sorry to put you on the spot. What would be the, I mean, is it 50-50 residential, commercial for last year? I realize that during boom and bust times, that's quite different.
It's about 20% residential.
20% residential, 80% commercial. And of those commercial, would you say that most commercial are larger projects in excess of that $50,000?
Valuation.
Valuation type thing? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I know we have requests to speak. Do we have any written communications?
Madam Mayor, staff received written communication from the Home Builders Association, Urban Planning Concepts, the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, asking that council adopt recommendation three, appointing a committee to refine the proposed plan. And in addition, the TOEPS group recommended against charging fees for public art and suggested that staff explore alternative ways to provide public art.
Okay, and we have how many requests to speak?
And we have 15 requests to speak.
15, okay. So, at least art brings people to our city council meetings, right, Mr. Posada? Okay.
And ICE facilities.
Kathy Sharum, followed by David Dennis, followed by Judith Frost, followed by Andrew Hackelman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm really excited to be able to comment on this, on the possibility of the public art master plan, and I would like to speak in support of recommendation one. And it's been proven that when a city embraces and incorporates art, its competitive edge is improved, it's more attractive, and people choose to live and visit in that city, and it ultimately attracts a skilled workforce. It's also been proven that even small creative acts can change the perception of a sense of value and even safety in our neighborhoods. So, one of the reasons people are drawn to the central coast as a whole is because of its natural beauty. So, it's only fitting that our city and our communities reflect and enhance that beauty. And I think it's important to remember that all of us stand to benefit from improving the arts in our community, excuse me. So, I think this plan will bring us a step closer to that. Thank you.
Thank you. And a request is made that, and not for you, but anyone coming up to speak, if you can say if you are a city resident or not, that's all.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Did I pronounce your name right?
I think so, I knew it was me. David Dennis.
Yes.
And I am a city resident, I live just eight blocks away on Hermosa Street.
Okay.
I came, again, also to speak in favor of recommendation one, that throughout our country as well as the rest of the world, cities and towns are always competing to be the place that people want to bring their business, that they want to live, that they want to visit and vacation there, and where they want to spend their money. People choose their homes and business locations by the unique qualities that a city has. And when you take a piece of property and you add artwork to it, it gives a feel that it's a special place, that the owners value it, that the community values it, and that investment in both time and care adds beauty and interest to the entire community. Developers should also play a role in this and contribute to create public art because it's beneficial in attracting customers, tourists, and employees to that city and to that business. And because in the long run, that contribution will create a more unique and valuable property that will benefit the city's residents and the entire business community. I think to answer, if I can, Mr. or Councilmember Cordero's question about how do you measure success, his statements about what he saw when he visited other communities, answer that, that it's how it makes you feel, and if you feel good about being in a place, you're more interested in investing in it and in being there. And I think that's something that all of us can benefit from. And it takes vision, I think, and a little bit of sacrifice to do something that costs something now, but benefits others for years to come. And this, this room that we're in, this building, could have been, when it was built in 1934, a cement block building, but it's a similar city, and you can't come in here and, and not feel the value that this community has. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Frost, followed by Andrew Hackelman, followed by Melissa Johnson.
Hi, I'm a resident of the city of Santa Maria since 1989. Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the audience, excuse me, I'm a bit nervous, so bear with me here. I'm speaking in support of the city council adopting or issuing a direction to staff on drafting an ordinance per recommendations one or two, either one. We need to fund public art in this community, and we need to do it now. And I have a partial quote here from an author, Mrs. Lewis, she said, "Art, imagination, and a feeling for magic are basic elements of human nature. It is comforting to contemplate in this age of hatred and cruelty. Based on evidence-based research on the subject of the value of public art," which you can look up on Google, "and including many TED Talks, there should be no doubt of the importance of public art in a community." It is, this is not my opinion, you can look on this, you can find the research. "It's a critical element in tens of thousands of cities around the world, and it is appreciated for the value it adds to those communities. The existence of public art dates back to the beginning of civilization, so this is not a new concept, but rather one that has truly served and stood the test of time. In the United States, the Association for Public Art was formed in 1872 with a broad national purview. Public art, 1872. Santa Maria, 2017. Public art is often underappreciated, but there is a lot to applaud. You don't buy tickets to see it. You can enjoy it alone or with others. You don't have to dress up to enjoy it, and it's open for everyone. Community art also creates attachment to one's community, it enhances property values, encourages pride in the ownership, and adds value to the community. I think these are all things that the community, the members of this community would like to see the city council do. Public art is a social offering, welcoming and open, is part of the aesthetics of a place along with parks and green space. Public art strengthens cultural awareness, creativity, innovative thinking in the community, and is a source of pride for all residents." Again, these are not my thoughts alone, these statements are backed up by independent evidence-based research conducted by esteemed organization. Public art is a huge asset for a community and its residents in terms of quality of life, property values, attachment to the community, and pride. These are things we all want. Santa Maria doesn't have a creek running through it, and we don't have a beach, but thanks to your predecessors, we have wonderful parks. Now, you have an opportunity to leave a legacy for this city and put the icing on the cake, so to speak, by making it possible to have public art in Santa Maria. Don't wait any longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Frost. Andrew Hackelman, followed by Melissa Johnson, followed by Dan Blau.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you today. The city of Santa Maria is a beautiful city, and it no doubt will be enhanced by a public art master plan. However, we face a very grave situation with our housing crisis in California. Just last week, a package of housing legislation was passed and signed by the governor, and this, this legislation, it's acknowledged, won't be enough to bring us home in terms of supply, to keep up with the growing population that we have. Santa Maria stands out as, as a vital city in our, in our central coastal region, and putting any kind of downward pressure on the builders of homes in our community and our region is, is not the right direction that we ought to be considering. But, that said, we absolutely support the, you know, undoubted benefits that an art program would have in this community, and they've been proven to be successful in other communities. But we appeal to you to, to consider option three and go back and take a hard look at, at how this might be partnered with nonprofit and with other more broad-based funding sources that, like I'm sure all the speakers today will mention, that the public art benefits everybody. And since it does benefit everybody in the community, there ought to be a sharing of that burden across the community. And like Councilmember Cordero said, there really should be some metric that shows what success means in a program like this. And just to close with our position that we absolutely support the art program, but respectfully suggest that there should be a broader base of funding support for such a program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melissa Johnson, followed by Dan Blau, followed by Linda Schaefer.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I have been a member of the Santa Maria community since 1995. I'm a mother, I'm an artist, I'm a teacher, and I'm also a real estate agent and a businesswoman in our community. I have a slightly different take on the situation than the previous speaker. I think that art makes people happy. People want to be happy. And where people feel happy they want to be, they want to live, and where people live, our businesses thrive, whether they are small businesses, our industry, and our real estate. our businesses thrive, whether they are small businesses, our industry, and our real estate. I have a lot more that I had written down, but I know there's 15 speakers, so we'll just skip the rest of that one. Art is good for everyone in the larger community. It lifts our community spirit, our collective psyche, it forges our community identity, and contributes to an even more vibrant culture. It supports and encourages Santa Maria as a destination for tourists, but also, that affects my business, a place where people want to live, which again is good for our restaurants, our retail, our agriculture, of course, our wine industry. If people, you know, want to live here because of the public art destinations, it certainly makes my job easier selling houses. One of the major trends of the 21st century is public art. It is defining the American cityscape across our country. You know, we talked a little bit earlier today about San Luis Obispo, Pismo Beach, Santa Barbara, Santa Cruz, Seattle, New York, Chicago. Please keep that in mind as you are building our city. We do not want to be left behind, this trend of the public new artistic American cityscape.
Thank you very much. Dan Blau, followed by Linda Schaefer.
Thank you, and I am a resident of the city, yes. First off, I need to tell you that in no way am I opposed to art. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think having the commission and the city promoting it is a great idea. My real problem is the way that they're currently funding. I've had great discussions with Assistant City Attorney and the City Attorney about Prop 218 and about AB 1600, and if I look at what the Planning Commission recommended before it got modified, I think it's clearly a tax. I mean, when the planning, when the commission chair sits up and says, "No, no, no, I don't want to do what the Arts Commission suggested. I want everybody to participate. I want a five percent, excuse me, half a percent across the board on all permits." Well, in my view, that's a tax. I will tell you, I spent considerable time looking at a bunch of different communities around us, and I wish I'd had Mr. Smitherson's list so I could have analyzed it further, and I'll comment about that at the end. But what I found was that the majority of the cities that are doing this or counties are much larger than Santa Maria. They're more akin to populations of 500,000 people and greater. I also found that, for the most part, they had a, in their budget, a fee that was part of the budget every year that they contributed art out of general funds. I also found that most of them used AB 1600 to fund the art for new development, which to me made sense, because if you've got a city that's been collecting money from the general population over a period of time, and now I come in as a new developer, my project, I need to catch up, much like I do with the AB 1600 fees for roads, or for the fire department, or for the library. And I will tell you, I read Erlich versus Culver City and a couple of different law firms that may comment on them, and our City Attorney is right. There is a good foundation for collecting this fee if you do it the right way. If you do it the way the Planning Commission did it or suggested it, I don't think so. But if you took, if you take it like a setback, or a landscape requirement, or a height restriction, and you say, "Okay, there's got to be an art element in that," that's the same kind of a thing. And I think that's why most of the cities that I looked at only impose this on commercial developments of a major size. I get it. You build a 50,000 square foot commercial building, they're not particularly attractive. And to put a piece of art in front of that in a public place sort of mitigates the size, bulk, and scale of that building.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blau.
Really. I'll make one final comment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
At the Planning Commission, we had the same concern with Mr. Smitherson in that he brought material that he's putting into public record that was not available prior to the meeting, which I think was required by the Brown Act. So I'd appreciate it if in the future, if they're going to submit material for the record, that it be posted online or back at the back of the room. It's supposed to be, I think, 72 hours before the hearing date. Thanks.
Thank you. Linda Schaefer, followed by Craig Schaefer.
I am a resident of Santa Maria, honorable mayor and council members. My husband and I have lived in Santa Maria since 1979. Santa Maria is not seen as a cultural destination. We are perceived as a town on the Central Coast with just shopping centers, fast food restaurants, and few arts connection, unlike other cities on the Central Coast that have embraced art in their communities. This unfortunately is our reality. However, it is a fact that the two most compelling factors of relocating to a new town are recreation and cultural amenities. For that alone, art should be the cost of doing business for a more beautiful, vibrant, and inviting Santa Maria. As a homeowner, I would be happy to pay a percent for art. If we don't do this now, when are we going to do this? I want to be proud of Santa Maria resident, and with this Arts Master Plan, I will. Please do not delay passing the Arts Master Plan and ordinance tonight. We need to do this now. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Schaefer, followed by Ruben Espinoza, followed by Chris Slaughter.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Craig Schaefer, and as you heard, I've been a member of this community since 1979. Tonight, you have a serious local arts issue at hand, and I'm asking this board to say yes to art, specifically the Arts Master Plan and ordinance. This plan will ensure that as the city grows and faces redevelopment, public art projects will become essential companion components of the cityscape, murals, sculptures, banners, performances, and other artistic enhancements. Art enriches a city with character, creates identity, and gives us an enhanced sense of place that is appealing to residents and attracting to visitors. Art will strengthen the local economy. Art is not a frill. It enriches our lives. It inspires us. It's what defines us as human. Percent for art is not a new concept. For decades, cities across the country have successfully used this mechanism to enrich and beautify their towns. It's time Santa Maria does likewise, and the misconception broadly is that percent for art programs only happen in larger cities. It's quite the reverse. Most of the percent for art programs are in smaller towns. Tonight, this council has the ability to send a loud message up and down the coast that a new Santa Maria is on the verge of a cultural transformation, and that with time will become the envy of the rest of the Central Coast. We need to support and encourage the expansion of arts, not put up roadblocks to the progression of that in our city. I understand that developers must comply with enormous off-site requirements, from roads, parks, water retention basins, and schools. But that hasn't stopped anyone from building and making money in Santa Maria, and I don't think they call that a tax. It's part of doing business. A percent, a half a percent, or a quarter percent is a mere drop in the bucket that future owners will bear. A thousand dollars for public art on a $400,000 house is not going to bankrupt a developer or keep someone from buying that home. Amateurized, it's about $2 a month. Also, as a longtime member of the Santa Maria Arts Council, I assure you that our 53-year-old arts nonprofit is ready to assist in jurying future arts projects that will be coming forward with the adoption of this ordinance. In fact, it was the Santa Maria Arts Council that helped fund the artwork in front of this building, the statue of the mother and daughter, and the one at the courthouse. I strongly urge you to adopt this ordinance tonight and reject Options Three and Four, clearly a delay tactic, particularly in an upcoming election year. This plan has already been reviewed in several town meetings. It's been approved by Recreation and Parks Commissioners, and was sent to you with endorsement from the Planning Commission recommending approval. I plead with you, please say yes to this plan tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Espinoza, followed by Chris Slaughter, followed by Pastor Carl Nielsen.
Hi, I was born and raised here, Santa Maria, and I'm a local artist. I just want to let the planning or developers know that art and commerce are not exclusive. They go together. When you, when you put public art, it's free advertisement for the developers. Snapchat, Instagram, Facebook are all virtual galleries for residents and their users. If there's public art in a certain retail space, people post photos of themselves in that space, and that in turn will draw other people to that space. Public art creates landmarks for communities. It connects people to that community, to that place, and it gives a brand identity to those locations, be it retail space or homes. If art is located near a shopping mall or retail neighborhood, that piece of public art now belongs to that space, and residents identify that, and that creates a way of branding that location. When people connect to your brand on a personal level, they become loyal customers, and they spend money. Developers can leverage that public art to market it and use it as advertisement. I know when you look for a house, you look for what's close, and they advertise it, what's close as far as entertainment, food, and art. So I'm going to skip over some of the things that have already been addressed here. It also increases the, it also helps out the economy. So if you hire a sculptor, they're going to need bronze or metals to buy. They're going to buy it locally. You're going to need a granite base. That's going to be bought locally. If you hire a muralist, he buys paints from a local paint shop. He goes and buys rent lifts from the rental place and rents scaffolding, which is something that I do when I need, you know, to get into high places. I recently did a mural in Old Orket. I was commissioned privately by the owner of the shop, a barber shop. It was approved by the owner of the building, and the whole community benefited from that mural. The owner paid for it, but if you're looking for monetary value, he's had an increase in business because of that mural. People had a, it was a mural that depicts the community, and people loved it. I haven't heard one complaint from it, and he, I just spoke to him today. He commissioned me for another project, and it's because he's getting nothing but compliments and more business because of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris Slaughter, followed by Pastor Carl Nielsen, followed by Brian Schwartz.
Madam Patino and City Council Members, my name is Chris Slaughter, and I am no longer a resident of Santa Maria, but I've had a business in Santa Maria for over 20 years and been very involved in the nonprofit community and continue as the Executive Director of the Santa Maria Valley Discovery Museum, the trustee of the Santa Barbara Foundation, and the past president of the Orket Children's Arts Foundation. And I can speak for all of those organizations to say, another arts organization that has to raise money for the arts in this town would be very onerous, so I hope that that is not something that you are considering. The future of the arts in Santa Barbara County depends on the path chosen by today's educators, community leaders, and elected officials. It's in your hands. In Santa Maria, we can start by investing in our community with a public arts plan that sets the stage for more vibrant and positive cultural identity. The arts are not an add-on. They are an essential element of education and cultural vitality. The reality is, there's a tremendous amount of research that proves enrichment in the arts results in better students, more competent and well-rounded adults, and more economically vibrant communities. The late Nat Fass said, "We judge the greatness of past cultures by the art which they have left to us." And I ask you, how do you want Santa Maria to be remembered? How is it viewed today? By our children, by our youth, by our families, and by our visitors? Our new Costco, our Buffalo Wild Wings, and Lowe's will certainly increase our tax base, but when people drive in to shop here, what will entice them to get off the 101 in Bradley? And what will entice our youth to embrace this community, to be proud of this community, and to take care of it for future generations? How do we add cultural vitality and expression to a city that has little existing artistic or cultural expression? You're sure to hear about all the reasons that public art is important and that it's a documented significant impact on economic development. My question is, when does this begin? The journey, there will always be conflicting priorities, and when you do this, you have to start someplace. It's 400 other cities and counties have adopted similar plans, and postponing this by yet another committee meeting is not beneficial to our city. I recommend that you approve either Option One or Two. And let's begin to add importance to our streets, add pride to our buildings, our parks, our downtown, and our community. Today, let's start to develop creative placemaking for our youth, many of whom are embroiled in violence, gang activity, and seemingly hopelessness for their future. Community art creates attachment to one's community, and many studies have proven the economic development benefits of art, but there are wider examinations of the effect of art on our community's sense of place. The Knight Foundation surveyed 43,000 people in 43 cities and found that social offerings...
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter.
Thank you very much.
Pastor Carl Nielsen, I saw him, I guess, walk out. Brian Schwartz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Brian Schwartz, Urban Playing Concepts. Lori Tamore with Urban Playing Concepts has been tracking this item for quite some time now. She is on vacation. She wasn't able to attend tonight, but she did have several comments and questions that were contained in a letter that was submitted to you, so hopefully you have those for your review. One of those items is, and it's been discussed, is kind of the lack of detailed comparison of local cities and jurisdictions and the types of programs that they have and how they're implemented. Of the jurisdictions that were contained in the staff report, there was only one jurisdiction, that's Pismo Beach, that has a fee for residential projects for the art program. And I agree with Mr. Blau that this information, kind of the detailed analysis and comparison that was discussed earlier this evening, should have been included in the staff report. In addition to some of the financial questions, the, we have some questions about the timing, the cost, and the process, and how those art projects would get approved, and an added layer of discretionary review just adds to, you know, we have additional questions about that discretionary process and review. But let's be clear, we are very supportive of the goals and the objectives of this art program. We believe that it does provide a very substantial positive impact on the community, and we do want to see a program move forward. However, we do believe this program warrants additional analysis and information. And with that said, we support staff's recommendation, Number Three, contained in your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. I think this is a Dan Jones, or is it a Dave Jones? Ernest Arminta, followed by Stephen Pansky.
As a property owner, I'm investing with other family members everything we got, everything, risking high risk to develop our property. And I, I take issue. I think I pay enough fees. I think I do. It seems like for developer fees, property tax, DMV fees, I mean, we give, and we give, and we give to this city, and still, it seems like the Parks and Recreation Department just don't have the money. They don't got no money to do, to provide own art, so they want to come to us. See, it ain't the developers that are going to pay. It's I, the property owner, that's going to pay. It's clear that, that, it seems like, who's culture? What art is good enough? If I wish to put a Confederate flag, is that permissible, or the government's going to tell me what I should put on there? If I want to put a marijuana leaf on my building, then the government's going to tell me, right? So that's the way it seems. It seems that we have elected officials and their appointees that are going to dictate to I, the property owner, of what I can put on my building. I'm going to go with Recommendation Number Three. Until you figure out and give us, to us, the property owners, an option to opt out... Until you figure out and give us, to us, the property owners, an option to opt out, then I'm for it. Until you allow more than five members of public participation to sit on this board for number three. See, there's another issue that we ain't talking about. I'm going to paint my...put a mural that you dictate to me what I should put on my building, and then you're going to require me to keep the upkeeping of it, the maintenance. The city's not going to pay for it, it's I, the property owner, that's going to have to pay for the upkeeping. I think, Ms. Patino, the only sensible thing is to do is just go with option number three. Until you come with some more full details about it. And this is not about art. This is about a 1% tax, or no, it's a fee. This gentleman says it's a tax, and it's unclear. I guess any attorney can say anything. Ms. Patino, I think we give enough to the city as a property owner and a taxpayer. I think it's time for you guys to just start funding. If you want art, then you guys start funding it yourself. If Mr. Posada doesn't have the budget, then find the budget, make some cuts in his own department, and then he can fund the art program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen, is it Pansky? Okay, Pansky, followed by Helen Galvane.
I'm a current resident. I don't have a clear recommendation for any particular legislation, but I wanted to remind the council of the only place that I know that we have public local artists, and that is in the Santa Maria Municipal Airport where they have their arts on display, and that is not part of your jurisdiction from my understanding, but I just wanted to make that a reminder to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Galvane.
Okay, good evening. I'm sure everybody is aware of the multicultural background that we have in Santa Maria, so I would just assume that that would be one of the criteria, I guess, for art, for public art, is that it would reflect the diversity of our community. You know, like Mike, I usually think of strawberries with Santa Maria, but instead of a giant strawberry, we might think about the workers that pick the strawberries. Because I saw that in Riverside, I don't know how many of you have been to Riverside lately, I guess it's been in the last few years, right downtown where they have their pedestrian-friendly place. They have what they call, I think it's called the Peace Walk or Walk of Peace, and it goes on for about at least maybe six blocks, like at least three long blocks. And what it is, is they have the three, you might call peacemakers. They start off with a beautiful statue of Mahatma Gandhi, and then on the next couple of blocks, they have Cesar Chavez, and then the last one is Martin Luther King. It's a beautiful area. And so, I think as a city, if we are going to be asking for artists to submit proposals for what they're going to do, that maybe Santa Maria should adopt a theme, like, you know, we might call ourselves Santa Maria, the City of Peace. And so, everything that they submit would be around that theme, kind of like what Santa Barbara does with their architect, architectural buildings, or I guess they're, you know, the rules that they have concerning that. So, I would just suggest that as we get into this with the plan, that you might come up with some kind of theme that would kind of reflect all of the art that we're hoping to get. And I know, like Mr. Espinoza, that there are other local artists, there are sculptors, there are muralists that have come out of the city and are doing great work elsewhere, so I'm sure that they would be willing to do things in their hometown. This is my hometown, I was born here, so I am a resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galvane. Is there anyone that submitted a slip that has not spoken?
It was Deana Soares.
Okay, Deana Soares, okay.
Thank you, Madam President and city council members and the public. Let me speak. My name is Deana Soares, resident of Santa Maria for 54 years. I've been involved with the arts, I guess, for the past 30 years. I was a picture framer, art appreciator, sales representative, and marketing. I do do public artwork. It's privately, though, self-contracting. The city planning has gave me the approval. It's per business, and it has been a great honor to support and adhere to the community. I think that I'm in favor of the arts, I just have a few concerns. I don't want it to take away from the kids, the students, individuals for receiving that in the schools. I think if we focus on other individuals and it being put into the land or the structures, facilities, that it might detract from the individuals that are learning and getting schools implemented taken away. I do, I think our penny, the penny that was marketing, we have our logo, which was represented throughout the United States as far as a logo which is represented on our penny. I believe the Chalk Festival, I was just at this past weekend, it was a great incentive for me to get going in arts, and I think that the kids had represented themselves in that nature. Our Grape and Grain Festival was detracted, I guess, this year. We have another event taking place. We also, I don't...there's other areas I think that the arts can benefit from. I'm concerned safety issues as far as reflections from the metal sculptures. I was one of the founders of, with William Cody, who presented that to the city council here in the front, and I'm all for 100% as far as more art and growth. I just think we have to do it at a smaller scale. For one, I'd like to see the fire hydrants painted, but that's another issue we can take up. I think, you know, the library has a great gallery. I don't like to see the marketing, you know, I know the structures and the building of new housing and facilities, they're going to need artwork involved and in their homes, in which I think, you know, goes into sales and marketing, which is a whole nother end. I think our economy, we can support it. I don't find that the budget is not, you know, willing, I just think that we have to do it on a lower scale. I think everybody has covered pretty much most of it, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to bring this item back to council for discussion. So, Mr. Posada?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Just quickly to recap some of the items that were brought up in public comment for you. Mr. Smitherman has information related to the written correspondence that the council received. The written correspondence that you received, we've received those at prior commission and meetings. So we did prepare responses to those, so you do have those information, and Mr. Smitherman can kind of hand those out to you. One of the comments that was made by Mr. Arminta, I believe, was about homeowners, and we want to really make it clear that this is not a fee that would be yet attached to any homeowners at this point in time, that on one of the recommendations, it would affect the individual who...individuals who apply for a building permit, and the valuation of that building permit would be any improvement over $50,000. And $50,000 for most of you that are involved in remodeling of a home or adding an addition, that's a pretty significant dollar amount to get started. So no fee would be imposed until they reach that $50,001 mark. So the other comment that was made, I believe, a little earlier on, was about the equity in how the fee would be calculated out. There was some concern in some of the correspondence related to what about the city in general, those residents who have not contributed or didn't contribute to the fund? And certainly, those are some of the projects that, as Mr. Arminta mentioned, we have provided through our own budget. We focused on some of these activities, and we've gone out and raised the money in the community for things like the art boxes and things of that nature. So, you know, we are out there still trying to promote the arts on that level. But as far as whether it should be commercial or residential projects, again, it is an option for those individual projects to add public art. They don't have to pay the fee. There's a way for them to provide art in another venue. There was also a comment about the impact to the schools that I believe the last speaker made. Certainly, this has got no impact to the schools, especially on the commercial side of the fee, because the commercial developments don't have an impact to the district, so the districts don't trust that as a fee. That is, however, for residential, there is a school district assessment charged. And also, the last speaker mentioned Autumn Arts Festival and the fact that we're not doing the festival this year. One of the things that we decided from a staff perspective was to pull back and regroup and reorganize that event so that it's a better venue for local artists to come out and the community to come out and actually enjoy art, adding an international or an ethnic theme to some of the artists that we have displaying art in that program. So that program, we expect to bring it back next year. It may not be in autumn, it may be at some other suitable timeframe, but again, it's just time to revamp it. That program was, gosh, probably about 30 years old, so it's been around for quite a while. I think there was one other comment about us providing information that wasn't on the agenda. This PowerPoint, with the exception of, as I said, maybe two or three little points, was provided via the planning commission meeting. There's been minor changes to it, but nothing of any significance. It really was really for me to provide me with an outline to give you a good overview of what the program has gone through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Posada.
I have a question for Mr. Posada, if I could. So, you know, a few questions have come up or stimulated questions. How would we implement a tax like that? I mean, who would make the decision on, you know, what the art is? Just parks and rec? It's going to do this?
First, it's a fee, and there would be a jury...
You say tomato.
Yes. There would be a jury. We would involve the local artists. We walked through an example today with the city manager, and what that is, is that a project would present a, let's say it's a commercial development, they want to step forward and they want to promote a sculpture. So they have an option. When they are in the planning development process with community development, there are several stages along the way, as you know, in the planning process. We would want to have this art program be part of that planning process, so the developer knows right up front that there is an art component, giving them sufficient time to go back and create an art idea, a concept, maybe hire an artist, and bring something back. Those items would be brought before committee of the public, and we're hoping to get individuals in the arts community to step up and serve on that, and members of the general public through the recreation and take a recommendation of recreation and parks that would then, for lack of a better term, approve, you know, a concept of art. And then it would be up to the developer to either install that art or in their project, or they can decide, you know, we don't want to do that in our project, we would rather pay the fee. And so, there would be a jury component to that.
So it sounds like you're suggesting that this would be similar to an AB 1600 fee, where you're either providing the improvements or you're paying a fee to...and I didn't say tax, I said...
Right. It is an in lieu fee, that's what it's called, an art in lieu, that you would provide art or in lieu of the art, you would provide the fee. I would probably draw it more in parallel with the subdivision in lieu fee that we have in Santa Maria, where if you are building a development, you are required to provide funding for a park. And that funding for a park could be given in land, and we could give you credit against that fee. So it is, and that is the subdivision in lieu fee, and that's part of the Quimby Act and state law.
And how would that work if we made this an in lieu fee? Is that a...I mean, can the city council do that, or is that a...
1600.
Do we put that as part of our mitigation fee process? How would that work, Mr. Triio?
Good evening, city council. Yes, can you repeat the question?
Well, basically, I think, you know, Mr. Posada referenced this as similar to an in lieu fee for, you know, a Parks and Recreation fee and that sort of thing. I mean, if we did look at just making this an quote-unquote in lieu fee that we placed on certain development, I mean, would we do it as part of, you know, a specific fee that would come before the city council like this, or would we go back and include it in our annual review of our capital projects and our mitigation fees?
It's, under the law, it's not a mitigation fee, so we would keep it out of the AB 1600 program. It would be brought back, somewhat as it is tonight, to discuss what the appropriate level of fee is, whether or not it should be imposed at all, increased or remain the same. The in lieu fee aspect of it gives the developer the option of either paying that fee or providing the project on his project site. So, you know, that's a critical aspect of the Culver City decision, to have that choice.
So regarding art, requiring art as a part of a development process cannot be considered a mitigation fee?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Moats.
I just wanted to ask a question about that portion of the fees that will be collected on city public works, which is going to be a one-half percent with item two. Is that collected out of the general fund or out of enterprise funds?
It would depend on where the project was coming from. Based on what's in the staff report, we pretty much exclude the utility-based projects, which are the enterprise fund projects, but we do, we would charge the general fund that half a percent for a public works project that is not, I believe it says traffic-related. So for example, probably the most recent large public works project was the police department. Had there been a fee in place, there would have been a half a percent fee assessed of that, and that money the council would have put into the art, public art fund, there to be used for art. The other option there would obviously be to provide some art at the station itself that would meet that requirement. So that's kind of where we are. So yes, the general fund would, could be impacted by that. It would depend on the type of project that it was and the valorization of that project.
Well, as you know, the general fund's being impacted by a great many things these days, and we're in a deficit situation. Could we afford to take money out of the general fund?
You know, again, I think that would be something that we would have to look at by each of the projects. Right now, each of the departments, you know, typically when we build a project, we include certain fees within those projects. If there are architectural fees, plan check fees, inspection fees, there are fees associated with everything we do, just like anybody else that's developing in the city. So to add that fee, yes, it would be an additional burden to that particular project. And, you know, again, would it break the project? That would have to be analyzed individually on the project.
So, something like this, it seems to me, would be sort of a joint get-together with the developing community and the art community. It seems to me we're at loggerheads here, and we've got a faction, the developer community, that's for item three, and the art community that's for item one and two. Why haven't we got together and compromised so we can all vote on something?
We have. The options that you see before you, the original recommendation, if you look at the staff report, was from the Recreation and Parks Commission for a 1% fee across the board. That was vetted to the public, there was, through the planning commission, there was some thought that maybe it needed to be changed a little bit. I think Mr. Blau alluded to it, that we change it to a half a percent and that we not only include new development, but we also can look at all permits, building permits issued by the city. That request or that recommendation was in response to... That request, or that recommendation, was in response to the developer community saying, well, gee, you know, why are we the only ones being hit with this fee? What about the rest of Santa Maria? So that would give, that gave an opportunity for the rest of Santa Maria, those with projects valued over $50,000, to contribute towards the fund also. And in those cases, those smaller types of projects, they would really be, probably 90% of them would only be contributing their fee towards the fund. We wouldn't give them the option to put a piece of art out in front of their house or something like that.
So is there anything that we can do that would mitigate the burden on the developer community so that they might now support this instead of oppose it?
Thank you. And one of the missing points there is that the fee in the staff recommendation, again, remember, the fees began at 1%, came down to a half a percent at Planning Commission, and the staff recommendation is that we look at a quarter percent so that we're able to advance the program forward. And we can look at it over the course of maybe the next couple of years and see what that means. Right now, the biggest commercial development in Santa Maria is wrapping up, so it won't be affected by anything that you do tonight. Again, we're looking at what's down the road, what could be coming in the pipeline, that we would be ready to work on the public art partnerships with those developers when those move forward.
And this is one other thing. In choice two, it still says that commercial building permits valued at more than $400,000 are going to get stuck with the fee, but it doesn't say residential building permits. Well, is it the purpose, I mean, are you going to exempt residential building permits that are greater than $400,000? Or am I misreading this?
I believe so. In item, in that second recommendation, yes, residential would not be included in that.
Really? So the residential building would be burdened up to $400,000, but if you had a permit for greater than $400,000, you'd be exempted from any arts fees?
Based on how that's written, yes, I think it does. And I believe what item A addresses is the permit value of a project. And I believe that one was really focused on you add in addition to your house, and it's valued at $60,000. Then you would be subject to the fee.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes. We were talking about issues with adding on time. You're looking at time delay of approving projects when you add on another layer of structure. So my, the history I have had as a planning commissioner and as an economic development director is when people come in with projects, time is of the essence, because time is money to these developers. So when you're going to be discussing what is art in the eye of the beholder of whoever that may be, that may be, and the developer does not approve of that and wants something that he wants, we're delaying project time for these people. And it's, we're just adding another layer of things to delay projects.
That's, I mean, that certainly could be a problem. Ideally, as I mentioned a little earlier, the idea is, is that this comes up in the immediate, the initial phases, rather, of the planning process, where the planning staff works with the developer, lets them know right up front what the requirement is as far as public art goes. Certainly, there could be, and these are some of those details that we're talking about, that we would work out and bring back to you, you know, in the ordinance, is what is the timing? Where are these things happening? For example, if this was a public park program, which is also part of the development process, there are many stages of park development that have to happen, and they are all tied to the residential project or, you know, commercial project, whatever is going on. So all those timing issues, we're well aware of, and one of the goals would be to not interfere with them, but to go simultaneously along with whatever the developer is doing in their project, coordinating closely with the community development staff and making sure that we're not tying anybody up. Because we're not about red tape, you know, we're certainly have been supportive of trying to keep things as prudent as possible and learning through as quickly as possible.
Absolutely, but those unintended consequences are out there, and there's too many of them that are lingering out there for me to, you know, to look at this. I'm looking at the total valuation of 2016, and that is $109 million. And we're looking at the percentages from 1% to a quarter percent. The 1% is over $1 million of fees, extra fees, that developers will have to pay, that they will have to pass on to consumers. And even if you look at the quarter percent, it's $275,000. These are just fees that are being passed on to people that get tired of this. Trust me, I love art. You can come to my house and you can probably see the best art there is. But, and that's my opinion, some people may not like it, but, you know, art is in the eye of the beholder, and to put it under a municipal city to where there are so many unanswered questions, so many unintended consequences, I don't want someone pulling it out of their own pocket, having to pay for it, where there may create controversies on what is art and what isn't art. And I, one of the things that a speaker said about people coming in, wanting to come into the community, looking at how beautiful it is, one of the things that developers look at are the fees that are attached to building. They will go down a complete list of line, community develop can attest to this, and what are your fees? And when they see fees that may not, you know, they might necessarily like, it's, you know, in lieu of is also, in my opinion, when I hear in lieu of, either you do the art or you give the money to us, it's either way, you're going to pay up. And I just don't want to put that burden on people out there that are trying to make this a better community. I really feel that art should be funded through nonprofit organizations. There are so many people here that said they love art, they want to do art, $1,000 is nothing. Great. Donate that to a nonprofit. Donate that to the Santa Barbara Arts Council, so we can, it can come here to the city of Santa Maria. But to tie up projects in time and in money, we want to bring people here. We don't want to lose people at all whatsoever. So those are my concerns. And that's, you know, I'm looking at number three, to go back and look at all those unintended consequences that may arise from these things, because I know they're, you know, they will, and we need to get the development community in here to really discuss, along with the artists, of what they have gone through in regards to building a project.
Thank you, Councilmember Waterfield. One of the comments that we always try to make from staff, it's our job to bring you the information.
Absolutely. And you do, but there's, you know, those underlying things that you do not know, neither do I, but we, you know, we need to come together to come up with a satisfactory conclusion.
And we do want to remind the council members that there, you know, in alternative number four, we do talk about an adoption of the plan and then to study the ordinance. Mr. Swindman, if you could move us to the fourth option. Mr. Khan, thank you. To adopt the master plan tonight and appoint the committee to further analyze and find the proposed percent for the art ordinance and bring the ordinance back to you for further consideration. I believe that's where we're talking about the nuances that Councilmember Waterfield refers to. The plan itself is an outline of how the city would proceed to develop public art. That's really what that component is.
Could you put up all the options on the screen, please? Thank you.
And I'm sorry, they also have the condensed versions. Your staff report does have the more detailed.
I don't have option four on my staff.
No, that was, that was one of the things that we did add today as an alternative. I think it's, one of the comments that was made along in the presentations was that, you know, everybody is supportive of the arts and they want to try and do that. And I do think that most of the arts groups here would say that the community businesses and things have stepped up and supported the arts, you know, throughout the years. From, I'm unaware of, and maybe somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, but in the last 20-something years that I've been director, I don't, I'm not aware of any developer coming directly forward and supporting any major piece of art in any of the developments in town. And certainly, that was something that wasn't required, so I don't think we saw any of those come forward.
But I don't recall, in my 11 years as a planning commissioner either, that the subject was ever brought up and brought up to them. So, you know, I don't think they'd come out of the blue and say, hey, hey, wait a minute, I want to do this. So that needed to have been brought forward as a suggestion as well.
Do you have any comments? Okay. I certainly have supported the arts. I've taught art in school, and I've taught school. I, I think it's very, very important. I think it does define a community in many ways. But I, my concern is who pays for it? And I think everyone in the community benefits. I think everyone in the community should pay for it. You know, no, someone made the comment, like, when the developers build anything, that, and even if fees go up, that they can still sell their product. Yes, but I also, we also hear at the council about how that we don't have enough affordable housing in this community. We've, we're like $5 million in a deficit in our budget. We don't, in Santa Maria, the people in Santa Maria don't have to pay for parking. And in fact, Mr. Hayden, what about other communities? I know Santa Barbara has got all these fees people have to pay for. We sit on a good-sized aquifer. The people in Santa Maria have really, really good water. We have a pavement index, which is the best in the county. And so our streets, the infrastructure gets done right away. And so a lot of places we spend our money, people don't necessarily see. But, and I was asking you about the different cities. I know San Luis charges parking, Santa Barbara.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm trying to look very quickly on our website, on our budget. If you'd bear with me for just a moment, I'll get the latest, latest information for you on this matter.
We have more parks in Santa Barbara for our kids, for our youth to play in. And I, and everyone that came out and spoke in favor of the arts, and I understand that. It does all that. It does bring commerce together. It does bake for a better place to live. My big concern is who pays for it? Mr. Hayden?
With regards to your question, parking revenues and fees from other agencies, we take a look for comparison purposes for revenues. The city of Santa Maria compared to three other nearby communities, Lompoc, San Luis Obispo, and Santa Barbara. The city of Santa Barbara, they receive roughly $14 million a year in parking revenues. The city of San Luis Obispo receives approximately $7 million a year in parking revenues. The city does not charge any parking, so we receive no revenues from that perspective. The city of San Luis Obispo also has a utility users' tax of about $5.6 million. The city of Santa Barbara has a utility users' tax of about $7 million. We currently have neither utility users' tax. That money goes directly to the general fund. The other thing is the city of San Luis Obispo has a half-cent sales tax add-on. They generate around $7 million. You'll recall, the city of Santa Maria, we have a half, a quarter cent use tax. We generate about $4.5 million. The city of San Luis, excuse me, the city of Santa Barbara, they're proposing a one-cent sales tax add-on in the upcoming budget. That would generate about $22 million for the city of Santa Barbara. So they do have other revenue sources that we do not have right now. There's no parking or utility taxes in the city of Lompoc.
Okay, thank you. Now, tonight on the admin calendar, agenda, we passed the agreement for the Public Opinion Research and Ballot Measure Polling Services. When we did Measure U, we added the levy to that. So what are the chances of adding an art fee to that?
As you indicated, on tonight's city council agenda, the consent calendar, the city council approved a contract with Godby Research for $25,000. That was already budgeted in the 1718 budget. Our intent is to contract with Mr. Godby, have him do a polling of the community to see whether or not there is support for the renewal of Measure U. During that polling, they very easily can ask other questions of interest with regards to whether it be support for adding funding for art program, possibly adding funding for soccer complexes. There's a myriad of potential funding sources, questions that can be asked to garner whether or not there is support for those types of activities within the city.
What about attaching an art fee, or whatever we want to call it, cultural fee to the TOT?
Our TOT right now is at 12%. It was at 10% when we did a survey a couple of years ago. We were really the only city in the Bay County area that was still at 10%. So the Chamber of Commerce came forward with the Hotel Association to increase the TOT to 12%. The city does not receive any of that 2% additional TOT. That goes directly to the Tourism Improvement District, and they use that for marketing purposes outside of the tri-county area.
But is that possible to do?
That would be possible to do, but that would require legislative action on the council's part and also to go out for a vote, I believe.
Okay.
Good idea.
You know, I'm trying to think of something out of the box, because I think it needs to be paid for, but I just don't know that we just put it on a certain segment of our community to pay for this. And though everyone benefits, I would like to see everyone pay for it. And it'd be nicer if the people that came to visit us from out of town could pay for it. So that's an option. Mr. Boyson?
Well, I, you know, I realize this has been in the process for the last couple of years. I, you know, this wasn't part of our 2016 council objectives, that we established objectives and things like that. I mean, this, you know, the art process or the emphasis on art was not, you know, placed, we didn't get any blue stickers to put on the bulletin board for, you know, should we put more money into art? I, you know, I agree with, a lot of things have been said. I mean, we have so many priorities. We're asking employees to take, you know, to take cuts and to share with us in the burden of a deficit balance in the general fund. You know, it's hard to say, well, and we're going to decrease that general fund by a little bit more by, you know, taxing capital projects. Or, you know, from the fact that we may be decreasing that general fund by that developer that just decides that, you know, that was the straw that broke the camel back. I just can't do this project anymore. So, you know, and, you know, so, and what about some of the other issues within the city? You know, we have a tremendous problem with street homelessness. You know, I mean, is there, is there a 1% developer fee out there that could help us take care of that? You know, I don't know. I mean, it's just, I think these are all priorities that need to be established on a 30,000-foot level and that we just haven't, you know, done, either in our budgeting process or in our, you know, forward planning process that we do every couple of years. So I just, I think it needs more study and it needs more clarification. I'm still not comfortable with who makes that decision on what is art. You know, I don't think you want me on that, on that program, on that panel with my You know, I don't think you want me on that, on that program, on that panel with my colorblindness. But, you know, I just, I don't know. There's a lot of unanswered questions that I haven't, that I haven't been resolved from my standpoint yet.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding from what I'm hearing is that this has already been pushed back and forth several times for over two years.
Correct.
Okay. I'm not suggesting that it will take this long, but I seem to remember that when we passed Union Valley Parkway in the city, it took 26 years. So I'm not in favor of keep postponing and postponing and postponing. I, I don't know what more we're going to gain from re-studying the restudy. It seems like almost everyone here tonight, on both sides of the fence, spoke in favor of public art. So the real dilemma is, like the mayor said, how we're going to pay for it. We're talking these percentages and you have a million dollars, a million dollars, the 1% is $10,000. Am I right?
No.
$10,000 bucks. No, that's not right?
If you're basing it off of 2016, $109 million, the 1% is $1,999.
Correct. But I'm not going to that figure. I'm saying that on $1 million, the 1% should be, I think, $10,000. So, so I don't have a million dollars, but I think if I had a million dollars, $10,000 is not going to be, is not going to send me to the courthouse. That's just my feeling. I'm a little sensitive to Mr. Blau's concerns that, why us pay for this whole thing, just like everyone else here is. But it's not going to fund itself. There's nothing magic going to happen. Something's got to be done to pay for this. The mayor mentions making everyone pay, and I think that Mr. Armenta makes a convincing argument that he's paid enough, as many other residents have. So having to bite the big bullet here, I think that it's clear that it's wanted, but nobody wants to pay for it. And I don't know what more we're going to get, like I said, out of re-studying this thing. I would like to see it, but I have reservations about, I'm certainly not going to be able to pay for it. But it might be more fair if everyone has some sort of, of an obligation. And maybe we can even make there some maximum obligation so that when someone gets to a certain amount of money in a, in the fiscal year, that maybe they're exempt from going any further. That might provoke people to have more projects. So I, it's, it's going to be really difficult, and those of us that have to face the music in the years to come are going to have to justify this in our own minds as to how and why we decided to pay for it like we did. With regard to Ms. Galvain's comment on what is, talking about what is art, I think that all of the art should be representative, representative of our community. I was in another community recently and mentioned it before that there was a, there was a, like a farmworker guy that was a huge statue, and you could just see the agony on this guy's face that he was doing the work out in this hot land and bringing some sort of a product to all of us. So I think that everything that we do should be, should represent some portion of our community. And I think to prevent people from saying, "Okay, I'll just put a piece of art in there," and they go out and buy some plastic doll and dress it up and say, "Okay, that's my art representing such and such." There has to be some guidelines, some absolutes with, that you can't do certain things, or you're going to demand certain levels of quality in the artwork. I think we should, if we can't arrive at a decision here pretty soon, we maybe need to try harder to arrive at a decision, maybe at another meeting, because I just don't think going back is going to do us any good. We need to make a decision and, and decide which, which way we're going to go. We're going to go against the wishes of Mr. Blau, or we're going to go against the wishes of Mr. Armenta? And everyone pays. And that's a hard decision for us up here, but kind of like everyone pays sounds the best to me, just because we all, including, including the five of us, would have to pay some portion of it by some means of doing that. What would that mechanism be, Mr. Posada? Do you know? Is that a, something we would attach to the taxes or something, or, oops, excuse me, the fees?
I think that right now the discussion was centered around maybe adding it to the upcoming renewal of Measure U as a possible component of that. And that would be one way to go. To go to a general tax, and it's a vote of the people, and it'd probably be more difficult to do something like that.
Well, maybe not with everybody wanting it. Yeah. I mean, that would be the true measure of how serious the constituents are about whether they want it or not if that tax fell, fell back on all of us. I don't know what the pains would be to do that, but maybe that's what needs to happen. So I'm in favor of trying to come up with a decision more sooner than not.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a few comments about Choice Two. I came in preparing to vote for Choice Three, but Choice Two's starting to intrigue me a little bit. No one's going to get, who gets a permit, $50,000 less is going to get dinged anything. Anyone with a permit of $50,000 to $400,000 is going to get a cap of $1,000. So if you make, if you, yeah, if you have some project that's going to cost $400,000, you're going to get dinged $1,000. I mean, if you're going to spend $400,000, what's another $1,000? The only people that are going to get dinged are commercial building permits more than $400,000, because it says here that residential's not going to get dinged. And then Part D, the city, well, I would expect the city to have some nice art in front of it. You know, we have nice art here in front of this building, in front of the courthouse. So I'm thinking more favorably about Item Two.
Madam Mayor, city council people, I stay attached to what I have said before, and we've got to go back and look at the unintended consequences that arise. Too many times, as a planning commissioner, when all, so many things have arisen from developments, and what Councilmember Boyson said, is that the final straw that breaks the camel back? What may be, $1,000 to you may be nothing, but it may be a lot to a lot of people. And I don't think that we need to burden a certain portion of our society to carry the burden for everyone that's going to enjoy this. If we can't come up with a solution of how this is going to get paid, and like I said, I am for art. I love art. I love everything about it. What I consider art, maybe somebody doesn't consider art. But I just think that this is a personal issue that we're bringing forward to have a certain segment of our community pay for it. And unless, you know, unless it can all be shared by everybody, you know, we either do Item Three or we kill it tonight and come back at a later time to do it. But I can guarantee you with Measure U, Measure U was so specific, and it was for public safety. And when I look at the amount of money generated from the 2016, $1 million all the way down to $275,000, these are police officers, these are firefighters, these are people that make our community safe. And so we need, you know, we really need to look at what we're doing. So it's, you know, I'm either Three or we just, you know, go back to the drawing board and start all over again, because there are, there are too many unintended consequences here. And with the deficit that we're coming into and with our city employees and our public safety employees that are going to have to take certain issues with their monetary income, I just, I don't know.
Madam Mayor, if I could just have one second.
Mr. Posada.
To address Councilmember Moats's comments, the number two does give you an option in there, or does part of the option. Number two is that, you know, you consider the recommendation from staff, which is Items A through D, and then you direct staff to develop an ordinance, you know, and I think that's the part that kind of gives us some flexibility maybe to address Councilmember Waterfield's comments, is that you give us the direction to go develop an ordinance, to work on it, to identify the unintended consequences, and to use these as kind of the benchmarks for what we would be coming back to you with as far as an ordinance goes. The other thing is you could consider something in the round of, or we could propose, if you went to Option Number Two, some kind of a cap level so that we're not coming up with these, you know, seemingly large dollar amounts on a particular project, that there would be some kind of a cap addressing that. Those are all options that we can certainly look at.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Posada. Besides the development committee, what about the business community? And I know we received a letter from the chamber asking that we probably go with Option Number Three. Have they been in, in the, in all those conversations? I know it's been going on for a while, but it's not come to us until now.
And I understand that.
And everyone's tweaked a little bit, and it's been, you know, turned this way and that way, but now it's coming to us. And as Mr. Boyson said, when we do our prioritizing and our retreat, this was not on anyone's radar. Okay, so.
And to answer your first part of that question, as far as the business community, we have been involved with the chamber since the beginning, and we've had Mr. Morris represent the chamber's interest at those meetings and his comments. Anecdotally, we've heard from members of the chamber that they are supportive, especially those who the art would benefit. We've not pulled them or solicited them to get information as to what the other businesses might think about it.
And I know the business community in Santa Maria steps up to the plate any time you ask them. They're there for everything. So I don't know if we should go with Number Three and appoint more than a five-person committee, but put people on there that are from the business or the development community also. So, anyway, I think someone needs to make a motion so we can move off of this.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion. That we look at Item Number Three and appoint a larger committee and have the development community to be attached to this committee.
So you're, are you talking seven member instead of five member or larger?
We can do, we can do seven, we can do a seven member.
So say a council member, two planning commissioners, recreation and park commissioners, director of parks?
Development, two development.
Two development, okay. Okay, so the item, so Number Three with adding the two development, two people, okay.
Would it be two development or a commercial in the?
Well, I, Madam Mayor.
Do you have a comment?
Ms. Waterfield, I, you know, I'm just kind of perplexed that we're even going any farther on this thing, I guess. I'm, I'm still, I, I still can't get my arms around supporting that, any sort of going forward at this time. It, it just, I, you know, I was raised on the principle that government should only do those things that the private sector cannot or will not do effectively and efficiently, and this just doesn't fall into that category for me.
Okay, you want to?
Councilman Boyson makes a valid, makes a valid point, and I, I have to agree with him, so I make the motion to not to go forward.
And I'd second that.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's been moved and seconded to not go forward on this at this time. Further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Cordero.
Yes, not going forward is not, is not killing this project, it's just saying that we're not going to vote on it tonight. Is that correct?
It is saying that.
Is that, is that, am I correct, Mr. Posada?
One minute, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Cordero. That, that would be a question is that, you know, obviously there's two elements to this component, you know, two components of this plan, and one of them is the art plan itself, and the second one is the ordinance in which contains a percent for the arts program. So that would be a question for clarification from our end as to what it is you would like to do via your motion. As far as what it means, I think that would be up to Commissioner, Councilmember Waterfield to do that.
Ms. Waterfield?
Right now, we have so many issues that we have to discuss that are pertinent to funding. And as much as all of us love the arts, it's not on our top of the list, just as it was where it wasn't in regards to when we went into our committee meetings for the, the planning session. I would say that we would just go ahead and stop it right now. You can bring it back later, but at this time, we've got to get through our budget crisis with what's going on. Would you?
And I would agree with that. I just, I don't think this is the priority that, that we need to be adding additional fees, whether we call it a fee, a tax, or whatever. I think at this point in time, we need to be encouraging as much commercial development as we possibly can, and, and we don't do that by adding another fee onto it. Now, if we want to include on the, the survey that we do for Measure U, you know, with the public support, public, you know, public art as being a portion of this, I think that's fine. I mean, that's information that we really need to do. Proposition 218 was, was established for a very important reason. It was to get taxing authority down to the lowest level possible. And I, you know, I think we have to respect that wish. I mean, whether we call this a fee or a tax, you know, it, it still is, is adding a burden. So I have to agree with Ms. Waterfield that I, I think it's a, it's kind of fruitless to even go forward with this at this time until we have a clarification of, of how we're going to pay this outside of the development community.
Mr. Hayden?
So am I to understand that Councilmember Waterfield may be withdrawing her motion, because I do believe it was seconded, and you're willing, you're wanting to table it at this time?
Absolutely.
That's, that's what.
Exactly. And if you want to attach it to Measure U and to get a public opinion, a more broader opinion of what the public wants, I think that would be a very good microscope to, to look at, you know, what the public really wants and if they really want to pay for it.
Now, to, to refresh everyone's mind, with regards to Measure U, the language that we had.
Was other essential needs.
Talked about funding to offset budget cuts, maintain, restore central city services, such as, and then we gave a list of those types of things. Police patrol, firefighting services, at-risk youth programs, gang and drug suppression, improve 911. What you're saying is also include in their funding arts program, things of that nature.
And I believe it.
To gain a consensus.
Absolutely, because it needs to be specific in there. It has to be specific, so the constituent knows what they're looking at.
What type of essential services you'd be looking at.
Right.
Okay.
A public arts program.
Mr. Hayden?
Go ahead, Mr. Cordero.
Mr. Hayden, having been here when we passed Measure U, there was a... Mr. Hayden, having been here when we passed Measure U, there was a tremendous amount of effort and information that focused Measure U on emergency services, on safety. I believe even the library got in on it by saying if we're opened up a little bit more, we can, we can hopefully get more kids into the library, keep them off the streets and out of trouble. I see no nexus between public safety, the passing of Measure U, and adding an art program to that, and in fact, I suspect that it could cause us problems in redoing Measure U. I think Measure U should be left as it is, because the focus was clear, and it passed because the focus was clear and the need was there. And there were people that said, what are you going to do in nine years when it's over with, are you going to, you're going to pass it again? I think Mr. Armenta was one of those that said that. And, yeah, not only do we want to pass it again, but we want to slip this, this little arts thing in there. I would not be in favor of that, because we're adding to what I believe was a good program, is a good program. It was, it was well put, well presented, and it passed. I think we would be clouding the issue for ourselves and Measure U. That's, thank you, Mayor.
Well, I think we're, it's a survey, we're asking the public what they think, and when they come back to us, they will let us know, this is weak. I remember in the conversation, when I was in the conversation, and I said, what about the levy? Because without the fixing of the levy, people are going to be charged flood insurance, and it was a lot cheaper for them to pay the few pennies for Proposition, for U, Measure U, than it was to have to pay flood insurance. But I think it's, I think it's something we need to know, I think it's informational from that standpoint.
And you can bifurcate the question. I mean, one of the questions could be, do you support the renewal of Measure U that went to pay for essential city services at a quarter cent? The other question could be, would you support an enhanced measure that would not only pay for those essential city services, but other city services such as, and then you roll out the arts program, the soccer complexes, things of that nature, that we have heard, the mayor's youth task force programs, those additional services could be the general purpose measures as well, too.
The soccer complex, which people are very interested, and we've had a lot of people come to me, I think the, I think that's good to know out there in the community also, that the kind of support we would get. Dr. Moats?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I don't see why there's any harm in passing Measure Three, or Choice Three. That doesn't commit the city to anything, other than to study the issue more. Maybe we could study the issue more and decide that the TOT tax would be a good venue, or measure, we could study it and see if we could add it on to Measure U, or get some more broader based form of revenue generation. But I don't think we ought to just scuttle the whole thing, so I'd recommend going with Choice Three.
Okay, would you like it still with the five persons, or do you want someone from the development and business community on there?
Well, I think seven would be fine.
Well, is that a motion?
I make that motion.
Okay.
Don't we have a motion on the floor?
No.
Oh.
There was never a second.
Okay.
Okay. It was withdrawn, yeah. Okay, so we have number three, number three option with five persons on there, which to include the development community.
I would be more in favor of number three than basically putting this thing on the shelf, maybe to never be opened again.
Okay.
So, yes, that's a second.
That's a second, okay.
For the seven, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I have a motion and, yeah, and a second for option number three, and any further discussion?
I hope not.
Okay. We've only been here for a couple hours on this. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Moats?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyson?
No.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming and staying so late. Okay, and Mr. Hayden, we will still put that on, we will still have on the survey, when we do the survey for Measure U?
Yeah, so to recap, what we will do is when we engage Gosby Research, we will ask them to poll the support for a, financial support for a public art program, as well as going forward and appointing a seven-person committee comprised of one council member, two planning commissioners, two recreation and parks commissioners, two members from the development community, staffed by the recreation and parks director, in an effort to further analyze and refine the proposed public art program and bring it back at a future date.
Thank you. Okay, the next order of business, Mr. Armenta, it's public comment period. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Mr. Ernestine Armenta, Honorable Mayor, if you would allow me, Councilman Boyson, I want you to succeed, believe it or not. I mean, I know I hammer on you every chance, and I will continue to, but I want you to succeed. I want you to be a good councilman. And when you run, I would hope that you would get reelected, but right now, Mr. Boyson, you guys are refusing to, you guys are trying to, can I put it, you need to go up to the plate, and you've got to make some tough decisions. I'm opposed to Measure U, and I would do, I would go to all my thousands that have voted for me in the past, and hopefully I can convince them to just defeat this. Measure U will not get passed unless you dissolve the first tier. By dissolving that first tier, you'll send a clear message to all the public out there. Hey, everybody's going to pay their fair share. We're no longer going to have the 60% here contributing, and the 40% here. We'll dissolve the first tier. That will get us out of the red and into the black. As soon as Mr. Hayden and our new city manager, the assistant who will be our new city manager, will come to you with a number. They'll show you that we can succeed, and they'll get us out of the red and into the black by dissolving the first tier. But Mr. Boyson, I would prefer with Mr. Cordero, Mr. Moats, Mrs. Waterfield, and all south, all running for reelection. But it's only you and Ms. Waterfield, and right now, I don't believe they're going to make it. You can have the police officers, you can have the association, and all your friends endorse you, but that first tier is going to get dissolved. We're going to have a, we're going to get rid of that unfair business practice that we have here. I want to succeed, but you, it seems like you're having a hard time making the tough decisions. You have to. Show us, see what, see what we're not having discussion here, ladies and gentlemen, is that during the time, you all four knew we were in a financial crisis, and you went on a hiring spree. You knew that we could not afford it. You went and hired all kinds of new officers, and of course, we want to be safe, but you went and you gave up performance-based bonuses? You even gave yourself a raise, because of all the hard work you do. Well, that was a turnoff to us. We knew this day was coming, we knew that all, that you had nine years to try to figure out how we were going to do it without having to renew Measure U. You had nine years, that even if you weren't on the council, you were community members, and you knew, Mr. Cordero, that this time was coming up. And now you want to ask us to pay for murals and art? It's going to be defeated. It's going to be a full-fledged battle. You're going to have to pull out all your friends, all your connections you've got, and all the police office association, firefighters association, and even department heads who want to get involved, but use caution.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta.
We're not giving them that easy, Ms. Patino, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Jaca, followed by Willie Galvano, followed by Mark Ratamaker. Sure, yeah, she wants to give, yeah, go first.
I have two items, very positive, to bring up before the council and before the staff. First of all, I want to tell you that we in the community are very, very, very glad of all the construction jobs that you guys have run through, the engineer, planning commission, and the city council. The Inos project has brought hundreds and hundreds of jobs, construction jobs. Our community that works in construction are very, very happy. It's going to bring a lot of taxes to the city, the construction jobs that homes are going up on Brosser, hundreds of people are working there, we desperately need those homes. We need the apartments that are coming up. The four-story building on Brosser in Maine, that's the start of a new phase for West Maine. Thank you for approving that. The hotel that's going to be built on North Broadway, that's going to bring a lot of jobs. So thank you very much for that. I know that you've probably never heard this before, but we appreciate that from the community of workers and carpenters and all that. The next item I want to bring up is something that we've been working on for a few months, is we met with a lot of the youth in the community. One of the main items that they wanted is hard-time jobs, a few bucks in their pocket to spend to buy books or whatever they're going to buy. So what we decided through the American GI Forum, is the umbrella of the American GI Forum Education Foundation of Santa Maria, to start a youth pride work project. This is funded through corporate America, individuals, and businesses. No city or government funds. What we're going to do is hire youth ages 16 to 21, six hours a week, at $10 an hour, that's 60 bucks, for six weeks, they'll bring $600 into their pocket. The first wave of students we're going to hire probably be 20, 40, and then they complete, they keep on going. We're planning to hire, and our project goals are 200 youth, and it's a lot of money, but as you can see in this flyer that was passed out to you, you're looking at it, on the left-hand side, we have the energy corporations that are putting money in, one of them putting a lot of money in, the American GI Forum itself, transportation company, ExxonMobil, Northwest Health Center, Santa Maria Energy, Sarah Duff for Progress, and individuals, persons have now come to us, or we have asked them, and they're going to sponsor youth themselves. Now, what are these youth going to do? They're going to work in different shops, agencies, or organizations, and are they going to learn the main important things of work? Be there on time, dress appropriately, follow orders, be responsible. Hopefully, that'll lead to some of them getting a full-time job sometime in the future.
Mr. Galvano, let me ask you a question then. So all these, they're going to go to work for these companies that are on this list here?
Yes.
Okay.
And the schools, counselors, and some of the people in the community are going to be given the names of those youth. We're going to work very close with Eric Galarza and Teresa, and with a task force to get these youths to work. I think that it's going to be a very, very good project for them, and of course, basic work skills and habits that they're going to learn are going to be important in the future. Appropriate dress, behavior, teamwork, skills, communication, and problem-solving skills. We have quite a few already businesses and agencies that are going to take these youths, more will be coming, so I just wanted to tell you that we want to work really close with you guys, and hopefully put a lot of these youths to work in the near future in waves of 20 or 30, and hopefully we'll get 200 by the end of a year and a half. It's a lot of money.
Thank you very much, Mr. Galvano.
Mr. Galvano, thank you for all you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jaca?
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members, and the few people in the audience that are left. This is really important. I fully am in support of the project that Mr. Galvano has just mentioned to you, and in fact, we have one of the business owners here this evening that's hung in there to, that is supporting, you know, will work with our youth. Diane, she's in?
Flores.
Flores, Diane Flores, I'm sorry. And so, you know, I'm sure we're going to have a lot of community support on that. Also, as Mr. Galvano mentioned, besides the work ethics and good stuff that they're going to be learning, you know, the business people are going to be their mentors, because they need to have someone to look up to that will show them, you know, that they can do these things. Many of our at-risk youth, you know, have lost hope, and so this is one way, and, you know, a lot of times, going to the movie, if they can get some pocket change to be able to go to a movie, that's great, you know, or do other fun stuff. Maybe buy a nice pair of shoes that they've been wanting, and it gives them pride, and I fully support that. Also, it was very interesting this evening, the arts council, the public arts issue. I've been excited about this for a while. We went to Sacramento recently to a funeral celebration for a relative of ours, and in the process, we met up with Esteban Villa, that is a muralist, recognized, so if you Google him, which he had me do, you know, these are the kinds of things that I would like to see these mentors come to our community, and I think, you know, people that we already have in our community, we need to showcase them. They need to be seen, and they are truly an inspiration. So I'm still drawing stick people, so, you know, I admire any kind of art you show. But, yeah, the murals, and as Helen mentioned, we were in Riverside, and walking that peace walk, it just gave me chills, and they actually had, you know, areas where you could sit, and history, and you could, you know, read different things, and it was, we just had a great time, and we just, you know, fell into that area, we were looking for ice cream for Mr. Galvano, and we found this wonderful place. So I fully thank you for your time, and, you know, I hope we can come up with a solution for the arts that's so important, you know, of course, not just paintings, but music. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jaca. Mark Ratamaker?
Mayor, the last time I spoke, you gave me a very warm welcome. I usually bring very hard words, thank you for that welcome. My fellow Santa Marians, thank you for these three minutes. I usually remind us that Jesus is our Lord, the one we must obey above everyone else, and then I talk about something that concerns me. Tonight, let's hear our Lord's words. We can't obey them until we hear them. So please, open your Bibles to Matthew, chapter five. When Jesus saw the, when Jesus saw the crowds, he went up on the mountain, and after he sat down, his disciples came to him. He opened his mouth and began to teach them, saying, "Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are those who mourn, for they shall be comforted. Blessed are the gentle, for they shall inherit the earth. Blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be satisfied. Blessed are the merciful, for they shall receive mercy. Blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God." for they shall see God; blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called sons of God; blessed are those who are persecuted for the sake of righteousness, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are you when people insult you and persecute you and falsely say all kinds of evil against you because of Me. Rejoice and be glad, for your reward in heaven is great, for in the same way they persecuted the prophets who were before you. You are the salt of the earth, but if the salt has become tasteless, how can it be made salty again? It is no longer good for anything except to be thrown out and trampled under by the foot of men. You are the light of the world." I'm going to jump down a little bit. "Let your light shine before men in such a way that they see your good works, and glorify your Father who is in heaven." Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Ratamaker.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comp portion, public comment portion of the agenda. Now we will have a report by the city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Your next city council meeting will be two weeks from this evening, 17th of October. We have a couple of consent agenda items. One is the funding for some bus replacements for the Clean Air Express and the Guadalupe Flyer. We will be bringing for you a design immunity for public works projects for your consideration, urban forest maintenance contract, and as well as a First Amendment to the water agreement with CCWA on the release of the state water contract and the reassignment. Two public hearings will be brought before you. One is the Gateway Mixed Use Project, that was referred to earlier this evening. That's the four-story mixed-use at the corner of Main and Broadway, commercial on the bottom, residential on the top three floors, as well as an update to the growth mitigation plan, otherwise known as the AV-1600 Plan. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. So let's have oral reports of council members. Sure, Mr. Boyson?
Yes, Madam Mayor, my only AV-1234 report is that I did represent the City of Santa Maria at the Central Coast Water Authority Board Meeting on September 28th. And there will be a couple of things coming, as Mr. Hayden mentioned, there will be some things coming before this council, not only at our next session, but in sessions to come, regarding, you know, very important decisions that we're going to need to make on water. The first one is going to be on the assignment of the state water contract from the County of Santa Barbara to Central Coast Water Authority. I think this will, is a very positive move for the council, and it's something that we do need to consider at the next meeting, and as well as going forward with supplemental Table A purchase at a later date, and also the Cal Water Fix, the so-called Twin Tunnel Project, that I think we're going to have to weigh in at some point in time. They're a big-dollar type of issues that we're going to have to, as Mr. Armenta says, we're going to have to make some tough decisions on. So in any event, that's my report on CCWA. The only other comment that I need to make, and the only time I can do it, is oral reports. I have been contacted by Mr. Sabani, who had the property there off of Blosser, that he was looking for a rezone so that he could accommodate Community Health, Community Health Center.
CHC.
CHC. And Mr. Sabani does not feel that he received a decision that evening. I think that we chose, you know, my comment, as I reviewed the tape, was that if we do nothing on the rezone, it has not been approved. Mr. Sabani would like a definite response from the city council. I told him that I would bring it up to the city council to give him another bite at the apple, to give him a free pass to bring it back to the city council for a definite yes or no answer in talking with the city attorney. The city attorney's office, they've advised me that they can provide us with two different resolutions, one, either approving the rezone, or two, a formal denial of the rezone itself. So with that, I would ask for the council's pleasure in allowing Mr. Sabani to bring this back without having to pay for what he said was approximately a $7,000 fee to bring it back through the system.
I thought we didn't approve the rezoning.
We didn't approve it, but we didn't specifically deny it, and that's what he is.
But what's the difference?
It died for lack of a first. I mean, nobody made a motion.
Can you explain the difference, please?
There was no action that was taken by the city council. It wasn't denied, nor was it approved. I have the Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Cinco, that is familiar with this and Mr. Sabani's issues, so he could probably give some better clarification from a legal perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Correct, no action was taken. My understanding, there was a motion made and not seconded, and that was it. So for purposes of judicial review, he wanted to challenge the city's lack of action approving his project. It's a final decision for that purpose. But there's a question whether it was a final decision for purposes of our municipal code, which would require him to wait two years and file, or file a new application. And because the council didn't take any action, it theoretically could at any time that it chose to.
But it died. So what happens when an issue dies?
But no, no action was taken. It was not denied, it was not approved.
You just said there was a motion made, but there wasn't a second.
Yeah. So no action was taken.
Does it die, then?
No, no action was taken. Motion failed, but no action was taken. That's not action.
I think it's a fine line, and it is. I mean, it is up to our authority, it is up to our bodies to approve a zoning, a zoning change. And the fact that we did not approve it, I, you know, it was my impression through my experience based on planning commission and city council and that sort of thing, that if it's not approved, effectively, it's denied.
It's denied.
But in discussion with Mr. Cinco, it is a little bit of a gray area, and I think that my own personal feeling is that we'd be safer in letting him bring that back for a formal decision.
I would say let him bring it back.
Yeah, I have a question. So in order for it to come to a vote, somebody's got to make the motion, and then somebody's got to second it.
Yes.
If you make a motion and then you second it, are you obligated to vote for it? Or can you vote no, even though you've made the motion or seconded it?
You can vote no.
Mr. Cinco, that's one of those top.
That's parliamentary procedure.
Either I or my, the city attorney can handle that question. I'll defer to him if he wants to take it.
So when there's a motion and a second on the floor, there should be a vote called, the motion maker and the second. Do not have to vote for it. Sometimes people second motions for discussion purposes only.
Okay. But then I agree with Mr. Boyson, I think we should bring it back and vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That doesn't seem to be a problem.
So if we could direct staff and to bring it back and also provide us with wording very specific.
So does he have to wait two years?
To either approve or deny. Well, he will have to after we make final.
Yeah.
Finalization.
Okay.
It would, it would help staff if the motion could indicate also a waiver of the fee in this specific incident.
Yes.
And if it is that motion, and it has been seconded by Dr. Moats, it would be good if we get a vote on that to direct staff to take that action.
Okay, and I would include that in my motion.
So there's been a motion and a second for a waiver on the fee.
And to bring it back.
And to bring it back, okay. Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
That's a first.
That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Waterfield.
Wednesday, September 20th, I attended the airport meeting at the Santa Maria Public Airport for Mayor Patino. Later that evening, I attended the Costco grand opening. Thursday, the 21st, I hosted a table for the Boys and Girls Club. On Friday, the 22nd, I attended Camp Floris, which is a veterans' home, which is a beautiful veterans' home on the corner of West Church Street, and that's just an amazing place for these wonderful veterans. Later that evening, I attended the Buffalo Wild Wings off opening. On, shoot, on Wednesday, the 27th, I attended Santa Maria Benita School District's quarterly school meeting. Later that day, I attended the Future Business Leaders of America. Thursday, the 28th, attended the C3H Policy Council Meeting. And later that evening, I attended the Four Square Church that was, they were the host. It was a youth, it was called the Youth Health and Safety Resource that was put on by Assemblyman Jordan Cunningham and the mayor of the City of Santa Maria. And that is it.
Dr. Moats?
Okay, on Wednesday, September 20th, I attended the meeting that the city has with the Airport Board, along with Ms. Waterfield, where I heard that Allegiant may be considering a flight from Santa Maria to Mesa again, and they were enthusiastic that maybe American Airlines might have scheduled flight to Phoenix. Pie in the sky. On September 21st, I also was at the Boys and Girls Club, where I was a celebrity waiter. I also went to the opening of Buffalo Wild Wings. On September 27th, I went to the combined school superintendent's meeting. And on September 28th, I went to the Boys and Girls Club Back of Youth Night in Guadalupe. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The things I have to report under AB-1234 are the United Way meeting on the 21st, which has got some exciting things coming up, and the C3H meeting on the 28th. I also attended a number of the things that have already been mentioned here tonight, but I think these are the only ones reportable under the AB. That's all I have.
Thank you. On September 20th, let's see, that was it, September 21st, I attended the Costco wholesale ribbon-cutting, and the SBK monthly board meeting, on which I serve on the board for SBK. That evening, I did the host table at Celebrity Waiters Night for the Boys and Girls Club. September 22nd, I went to visit El Camino Junior High School, McKenzie Junior High, and Benita Elementary School third graders. On September 27th, I attended the Future Business Leaders of America luncheon, and that evening, the special council meeting for the public employee appointment. September 28th, I had a semi-annual Police Department update meeting, and spoke at the Youth and Health Safety Resource Fair at the Four Square Church. September 29th, I attended the Marion Medical CEO Roundtable at Marion. And September 30th, the CWA California Women for Agriculture Country Casino Night fundraiser. September, October 2nd, which was last night, I spoke to a confirmation candidates at St. John Newman Church. This morning, I did the Ben Hayes Show, and then this afternoon, I went to the Fair Park to do the Santa Maria Job and Resource Fair. And that was really big this year, very well-attended. I was amazed. The city council will now recess to a closed session to continue our deliberations from earlier this evening. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the closed-session items?
Public employee appointment. Title, City Manager, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Agency Designated Representative, Mayor Patino, Unrepresented Employee, City Manager, and Conference with Labor Negotiators.
Thank you.